Good evening and I invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, we called the meeting to order. And the third item on our agenda is recognition. We'll start with Cory.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. Tonight it's my pleasure to recognize Kelly Curtis. Kelly, come on up. Kelly is our school counselor at EP Rock Elementary. Kelly has been elected as the Elementary Vice President-elect for the Wisconsin School Counselors Association last April. Excuse me. We're very fortunate to have Kelly here in Hudson and at Rock. She's a highly distinguished school counselor who is in her third year here in Hudson and has worked in the region for nearly 20 years in other districts. She continues to be instrumental in the development and implementation of our school counseling program here in Hudson and especially at EP Rock. Among her many accomplishments, she's had her work featured by the Search Institute in their print and video publications. And she's also authored a book in, I think it was 2008, titled Empowering Youth: How to Encourage Young Leaders to Do Great Things. So Kelly has demonstrated for us a sharp focus on leading school-wide efforts in a number of areas, but particularly in bullying prevention, PBIS or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, Response to Intervention, and database decisions. So she is leading by example on how to embrace the changing role of our school counselors in our district that supports not only our students but our teaching staff and our administration. And our goal is to provide that same level of intense focus to the initiatives with the counselors statewide. So I'm going to ask Kelly just to say a few words regarding her election.
Thank you Cory, I appreciate that. I know that when I was first nominated, one of the board members called me and said, "What do you think about this? We think you'd be great on the board." Initially, I'm like, "No." And I know Amy really supported me and encouraged me to pursue that. And so I'm so glad I did. We meet in the summertime, we meet sometimes, and on weekends. And it is just a really great group of people to work with. I mean, we're really guiding the direction of the school counseling profession and helping to develop the criteria for what means highly qualified school counselor. And I just feel like we're really fortunate in the Hudson School District. You know, I get to represent not only the school counselors in Wisconsin but also the Hudson School District. And I just know, you know, I see what's out there and I know that you can feel really proud of the school counseling program that you have here K-12. I mean, it's a really, really excellent program. And I'm excited to be able to learn everything I can from being on WISCAB board and bring it back to our team so that we continue to do best practices and just be highly qualified school counselors. So thank you for all your support of the K-12, you know, the comprehensive program. And thank you for acknowledging this, I appreciate it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you Kelly. Thanks for representing us so well. Congratulations on your position.
Thank you.[213.15][213.15](applause)
Next, we'll hear about the DECA Quiz Bowl competitors. Sandy.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Dane and Riley and also their advisor, Dustin Miller, is the new high school DECA advisor. And he shared with us that Riley and Dane attended the 2012 Chapter Opportunities Workshop in Madison this past July. And they have some wonderful information, well now, not information, but some news to share about the competition and how they did. Some pretty exciting things for Hudson DECA.
Hi, I'm Mr. Miller. Before they explain what they did at Cow this summer, I just want to say that these two represented Hudson very well, the high school very well. We came with two members of our chapter. Other schools had eight, 10. So what they did is they paired them up with a lot of different schools. And throughout all the competitions, they worked with, I think, four different schools. And every time at all the competition levels, they were right up on either one or two. But the whole conference, the idea was to demonstrate leadership. And these two did that by reaching out to other students, other advisors, and really demonstrating what true leadership is. So I'll let them explain more.
Hi. So recently, we've undergone sort of a change in leadership from Amy Emerson to now Dustin Miller. And it was a really, really hard transition. It was hard for us to get into a lot of different competitions and conferences. So I would actually like to thank Mr. Miller for working so hard to actually get us into this conference because it really was a great success for us. We ended up winning all kinds of the actual business competitions, the test-taking and the role plays. And we also ended up winning a lot of the fun competitions, like the race across Madison. And well, we didn't win the minute to win it because we are, there's not enough of us and...[338.81][338.81](laughter)
That was a problem.
Yeah.
So it was also a really beneficial part of it was there were lots of conferences for maybe newer chapters. And since we kind of wanted to turn around and maybe do some new things and bring some new things to the student body, we were able to learn about other successful DECA chapters and the ways, the different activities they've done, like 5K runs and things that they've been doing in their community, which was very helpful to give us some ideas as well.
And it was also great because we were able to network with, like Mr. Miller said, with chapters all over the state. We talked with West Apire, we talked with Appleton East, we talked with Menominee, and we learned a lot about what we can do to integrate better with community businesses, which is something we figured is natural for DECA to sort of move into Second Street, where all the local businesses are, and help be, we're pretty much free labor. So we learned a lot about how to get into business partnerships and work closer together with marketing departments in local businesses.
And also have helped them so that they would actually help us as well and improve our student body and the people that are in DECA. And maybe get them excited about it and even have people come in from those businesses and talk about the things they've been doing and get kids excited about their careers in the future and the different things that they can take part in.
Do you guys have any questions about what DECA is or what else we do besides the conferences? Or any more specific questions?
I would like you to share a little bit more, though. I heard, though, that there's a first place that you took while you were there.
Oh, funny that you asked. There sure was.[437.81][437.81](laughter) I believe we actually won two first places. Let's see, I think, what did we, we won the Quiz Bowl?
Quiz Bowl.
And thanks to this genius here, we had the highest average test score for the marketing exams. So I think we came home with, what, two medals each?
Two medals each, yeah.
Which is more than anyone else, and that's pretty good.
And you got a trophy too.
Oh, yeah.[459.81][459.81](laughter) That's a big deal, I'm forgetting about. At the end of the conference itself, I was chosen by the state officers to be Cow King, which was pretty much the male student who expressed the most enthusiasm and leadership throughout the conference. And I wish I would have brought my trophy because it's great. It's a big neon green plunger with a cow key and a Wisconsin keychain on it. I was, my heart was just on fire after I won that. It's still sitting on my side table to this day.
Usually has it with them, actually.
Yeah, I carry it around quite often.[496.21][496.21](laughter)
Any other questions for our bashful two?[501.21][501.21](laughter) So you guys really need to work on your confidence.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Been told.
And by the way, I have to say, it's really inspiring to see two young men dressed like that.[514.62][514.62](laughter) You know, it really is.[516.29][516.29](applause) And by the way, who are these two guys up on the screen? I don't recognize them.[522.12][522.12](laughter)
Yeah, I got a haircut and he put a suit on and...
Changed a little.
Seriously, congratulations. DECA is a great program and it sounds like you're doing great things with it. How many students are in Hudson are in this program right now? Do you know?
Well, last year, we actually had a total membership of about 80. And this year, we're working to expand those numbers, but more so to expand our active membership. Because it's easy to get people to pay the $15 to get into the club, but it's hard to get people to be active in it, which is why we're trying to come up with a lot of different activities to sort of excite students to not only join DECA but to be a major part of DECA.
Sure.
And really influence it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, Lynn?
Mr. Holland, how often does DECA meet? Where do you meet and how often do you meet?
We actually meet, well, we have a meeting this Friday morning. It's in the career center of the high school at 7:00 AM. And we're shooting for every other Friday, so it's not too much, but it's not how we used to have it, which was once a month where people would sort of forget about it and there'd be too much time in between meetings.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Again, thank you, gentlemen. Wonderful work. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your work. And you make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[604.73][604.73](applause)
High School Musical.
Yes, and I know I saw Carrie Heisler walk, oh, there she is. And she has some of her performers for the Fall High School Musical, The Music Man. And it will take place on November 9th, 10th, 11th, and then the following weekend, the 16th, 17th, 18th. And Carrie, tell us a little bit about who you have with us this evening.
Yes, hi. Good evening, thanks for having us this evening. I brought with me Jordan Stewart, who's a junior at the high school. She's playing the role of Mary, the librarian. And I brought Brian Urthers with me, who's a senior at the high school, and he's playing the role of Harold Hill, the music man. And they're going to sing a little duet for you tonight, quickly. So you can all taste one of the signature pieces from The Music Man, Till There Was You. We open in one month. We've been rehearsing for about six weeks already. We have a great cast of 66 kids, not only the 9th through 12th graders, but we also have 4th through 8th graders in the show this year as well. And that's not counting the kids that help backstage, behind the scenes, another couple dozen kids working with the show as well. So a large group of high school kids working on it to make a success. And we're excited to put on another wonderful, hopefully, production here at Hudson High School, The Music Man.
Well, can the two of you come, yeah, can the three of you come to the mic? They might want to say a few things yet.
Yeah. We're hoping that many people can come and see the show. We always have a great turnout and I think we have a great cast this year, as well as as you can see, again. So, yeah, any questions for them or for me?
Wonderful job, absolutely. I just, I have to tell you that the last graduation just was completely floored by the kind of talent that we have in this school. I really, I'm honest about this. I think about the early '70s and my high school days, you know, musicals were something that we really tried to avoid.[869.51][869.51](laughter) And music. But these young people are amazing. And I'm not kidding. It is amazing. I think there was another event, too, that we were, I was at, that was a small ensemble that sang, just unbelievably professional. So congratulations to you. I'm planning to be there. I have no kids in school anymore, but I'm going to be there because I think there's some real talent and some entertainment there. So thank you.
Thank you. We always have so many kids that want to be involved in our shows. We're so lucky here and blessed to have such talent that we do. And they work very hard to put on a great production, too, many, many hours. So we're grateful to our students who put all that time in and also our parents who help us put on a great show as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks very much.[912.63][912.63](applause) Moving on on the agenda, then, I'd just like to make a comment regarding, since we, the board has met last, there's been action by the City Council, I think as many of you know, about the rezoning. It was denied. I want the community to know that we are moving forward, that we're looking at and working toward, we'll be working towards other options. And we're beginning a process to do that. Our hope is that we can do this in a manner in which will not require a lot of time, but of course, it does require due diligence. And you're going to be hearing more about the process that we're going to be presenting tonight later on on the agenda. We are planning and scheduling a board special work session on October 30th. And I want you to know that you're welcome to attend and sit in and listen, but it'll be a board session only. So be aware of that. So moving on then to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. This is a report about the third Friday in September, our official enrollment. And on this page, the numbers represent students within our schools. And certainly, those four talented students that we just heard from are represented on this page as well. The first report that you see in front of you is our calculations for state aid. So this is a report that Lois Zaza from Tim Erickson's office prepares along with our secretaries in each of our buildings, counting the number of students so that, this is the calculation we use for state aid. So we'll just spend a few minutes on this and then we'll go to some other reports about enrollment. As you look across the lines, I first direct you to the total for the official count, which is for September 21st, of 5,624 students. So if we counted all the students that are accounted for state aid at this point without our summer school numbers and so forth, this is that total number. And if we looked at last year's number, just to give you a frame of reference, that number was 5,551 students. So it grew by 73 students. As we look across the bottom green line in the top chart, you can see that all of our classes are over 400, with the exception of our kindergarten class. And I know there have been some people in our community concerned about the size of that class and our enrollments growing down. And what this really shows is the fluctuation from grade level to grade level. As you look across those totals for each of those grade levels, you know, they're different. And they go up and they go down. And this kindergarten class is down a little bit. It isn't 400 and above, but I'm just going to demonstrate what that has happened in the past, how that has occurred in the past. So in 2008, '09, we actually had the exact same number of kindergarteners. We had 391. The year before, it was 413. And we thought, oh, our number is, you know, falling off at this point. So the year before, it was 413, then it was 391, and the following year was 416. So that 391 in 2008, 2009 is now in 4th grade. And as you look at the number, they are now 422. So they grew over that time period from kindergarten to 4th grade, 31 students. And so that's growth that continues in our system. And the kindergarten class that we're looking at right now is the start of the birth rates that have gone down for a couple of years in 2007 and 2008. And then what happens in our county in 2009 and '10, those birth rates go up each year. So we would expect possibly that we may have a downturn this year in kindergarten and a downturn next year if it reflects the birth rates. Again, it's a fluctuation and so we're not sure what's really going to happen. But generally, our numbers oftentimes do follow birth rates. They're not exact with them. But we would expect following that time period that it would go up like the birth rates do. So just an indicator about that. I'm going to also point out the open enrollment numbers. And if you'd look up at the top row where it says OEOD, that is open enrollment out of district. So those are Hudson students who live in the Hudson School District, who are attending schools in other school districts. And we get state aid for those students and then pay out as a result of that. And then if you would go past the dark line and go to OEID, those are students coming from other school districts through open enrollment into the school district. So the total there is out of district, coming in, we have 47 students who are leaving us. And into our district, we have 31 students on open enrollment who are coming in. And I know that each year, the board takes action on open enrollment students. And the law has just recently changed, but I'm going to refer to the decisions you made in May about the large number of open enrollment students that had asked to come into the district and go out of the district for this year. So these are new or ongoing and need to request again requests. And just to tell you how they play out, because you make decisions about these students, but the numbers you make decisions on don't play out to be the numbers that we have. Now, you can't look at the numbers I'm going to talk about and go back to this chart and see them reflected exactly here, because these represent other students that you've approved in other years as well. So these are just, don't look at those columns as I talk about these numbers. These are about the open enrollments that you approved in or out in May for this coming year. So you approved 23 students to come into the Hudson School District for this year. Two of the students remain district residents, so they aren't here on open enrollment. They're in our district and they're residents. One student moved into the district, had requested to come in on open enrollment, but became a district resident. 12 students did not enroll in the Hudson School District. They stayed in their home district or went to another district or someplace else. And eight students enrolled. So of the 23 that you approved, eight of those students actually enrolled in open enrollment into the district. Of the 50 students that you approved to go out of the school district, two of the students moved out of state, so they no longer were eligible. 15 students stayed in the Hudson School District as residents. And 33 enrolled in other districts. So that's 17 who went to virtual schools and 16 who went to other public schools. So the 15 that you approved out, only 33 open enrolled out of the district. 50 applied, 33 enrolled out. So just kind of gives you a frame of reference of what those decisions mean when they actually come into the school year. I'd like Tim to talk just a little bit about what this means because, you know, we have students who come in, but we have more students going out. And that is a financial impact to our budget.
All right. The estimate for aid per student under open enrollment law right now is, it's estimated to be about $6,445 per student. So with the net really loss of students for this year, that's about an impact of about $160,000 negative to the district. So there'd be some dollars coming in, as Mary mentioned, for those students that are open enrolling. And there's also dollars that are distributed via state aid to other districts for students transferring to other districts through the open enrollment.
So we'll move on to the next page unless you have some questions about this one?
Questions? Okay, moving on.
Okay. All right. This page really reflects just resident students. So Hudson School District, students who live within the district by grade level so that you can see what is occurring. And there's a note at the bottom, this does not include open enrolled students, students with disabilities placed out of the district, preschool speech therapy students, alternative school students, HGED students, or full-time youth option students. So again, these are the students that are primarily here all day, taking seats in our schools, certainly to learn. And as we look at that, you can see the total at the bottom and that comparison from last year to this year by grade level, we have an increase of 50 students across early childhood through grade 12. And we have just a summary of that. We have six grade levels that went down, one grade level that stayed the same, seven grade levels that went up. Our largest gain per grade level is in grade nine, coming into the high school with additional 51 students. And the next grade level with the next largest gain was second grade at 34 students. So this chart shows the fluctuations by grade level and how difficult it is to predict an exact number. If you'd look down at the bottom, this comparison really takes it by level. So if we look at our elementary enrollment, it is basically stable, down seven students, not significant, but down seven students, so it's under 1% change. At the middle school, we still are increasing enrollment by 1%, which reflects 13 students. And at the high school, had the biggest increase, which we'll see over a number of years now coming into the high school, it was almost 2.7%. District-wide, it's about 1%. And that's, that would be reflective, I would imagine, of the economy as well slowing down. But that slowdown in growth, we're still growing, is good for us when we're certainly out of space at the secondary level of both the middle school and the high school. I'll go on to the next page unless you have some questions?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Again, this is students who live in the Hudson School District, same numbers that are on the other page, but it's just a different way to look at these numbers. And it's really looking at the cohort groups of each class and what happens to them from year to year. So let's, the class of 2025, it's good to notice, our incoming kindergarten class certainly aligns with our HSD 2025 vision. And the kindergarten from last year, which was the class of 2024, if you look at that number, 428 students, when they moved to first grade, they became 431 students. So if you follow the arrows, you just see where they were in 2011, '12, and where they are this year. And if you just look at the growth from cohort groups, that growth is reflected in 62 students across those grade levels as they move forward. Different than, a different way to look at it than the numbers on the previous page, but essentially what happens, we have growth in each of these grade levels moving forward except for the oldest two grade levels, grades 11 and grade 12 at the high school. So this results in a total of an increase of 62 students if you look at them moving in this direction over this time period. And it's evidence of growth moving through the school system over time. And that's really my report on enrollment. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Tim?
Question, this might be a question maybe more for Nancy, but as we look at these numbers, especially at the elementary level, and I'm curious about how they fit with our class size guidelines. Are we in good shape there or do we have some problem areas?
Well, we haven't created that chart yet. We will do so soon. We waited till after the official count. But I would say that overall, we are still within class size guidelines. We have some classes, particularly at Holton, that are under the class size guidelines. That has been true over the years. And we have a few classes that are over. But generally speaking, the majority of our grade levels are within the class size guidelines.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Yes?
Tim, you were talking about costs for open enrollment. Are the costs the same in and out?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Now, you said that the rules for open enrollment are changing now? The figures you gave us were based on the last rule. So what are the new ones going to be? Just a synopsis.
Well, I'm gonna have Cory, I'm gonna refer to Cory to let him talk about some of the changes that have occurred in the law, and we'll be addressing that later on in the agenda.
That's in a report?
Not exactly. It's you'd be taking action on a request, but Cory can explain.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And just briefly, it basically went from a three-week window for application to a three-month window. It happens in the spring, and then the board takes actions in late May, with those being finalized in early June. So the window went from three weeks to three months. And then they added the exceptions option to be, you know, applications for an exception can happen at any time in the school year.
Any other questions?
All right. Then I'll move on to the state-level conference presentations. You know, from time to time, I talk about the conference at the state level or at the national level that we're presenting. And this last week, we had two groups who presented, two teams that presented at the Wisconsin A S C D Conference. This is a state annual conference that really focuses on teaching, learning, and leading in the state of Wisconsin. And it brings educators who are teachers, administrators, and higher ed together, along with educational consultants. So one of those presentations was Teacher Leaders Building Capacity for Instruction and System Success. And our presenters were elementary principal Peg Shoemaker, instructional coaches Sue Helmers and Lori Biggin, and second-grade teacher and elementary literacy facilitator Chloe Grine. Our other presentation was called Collaboratively Transforming a School Community with Response to Intervention. And that was presented by director Sandy Kovach and Cory McIntyre, associate director Dave Grambo, and associate principal and R T I coordinator Jim Delune from the middle school. I attended both of these presentations and certainly was very proud of the information and the practices that they were sharing in Hudson. But I wanted to share a little bit more with you. And it was the response from the audience and people attending the conference. It was extremely positive. In fact, in one of the presentations, a question was asked by a district who, you know, we could assume that they were trying to even imagine how they could get to this level of practice. They said, how and where did you start this? You know, what did you do to move this to this level? And, you know, their meaning was that it was an outstanding model, and they wanted to replicate, but they sure, they weren't sure how they could move forward with that. At the next presentation I attended after one of ours, the presenter referred to the Hudson model as an example. This wasn't part of her planned presentation. She attended the presentation and then used Hudson from the information that she had received there, which was quite interesting, sitting in the audience. For the remainder of the conference, I continued to hear from educators across the state who attended about both of those sessions. But the very interesting thing beyond that was I heard from people who didn't attend the sessions. And they came up to me and talked about what they had heard about those sessions. So again, certainly, these are practices that our teachers and our administrators are moving forward. Our district administrators are advancing and supporting as well. High expectations, high level of support in that system we're creating. And I think we should all be very proud of that level of support that is going throughout the district and is being shared as a model for other districts for both student and adult learning. And so I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with you, because we had outstanding response from people throughout the conference about our two presentations. So thank you for, and congratulations to those people that helped to put those on and to share Hudson practices.
Thank you, Mary. I think it's quite a tribute to us to be recognized in the state. Our district is being recognized now for outstanding work. And I think that's attributable to the leadership of our superintendent, as well as our administration and teachers. And so I've had the privilege actually to be part and watch this evolve over the last six years. And I'm very proud of it, very proud of this district. So any other comments or questions regarding the report? All right, we'll move on then to SMART goals. I'm sure some more things to beat our chest on.
We'll hope so.
I was supposed to say a few things while you're coming up here. And as you know, we have been active in SMART goals, helping improve our student learning for a number of years now. And October is the month where we share the new goals for the coming year. And so Dave and I believe some other people are gonna join you to do that, some other educators.
Absolutely. And thank you very much for the opportunity to share our goals with you. We're looking forward to it, and this is something we look forward to every year. And this year, I think especially so. We've had an exciting night already of recognition, from teacher leadership to our DECA representatives, to the musical. It was really awe-inspiring actually to hear about all that we have to offer and the talent that's being supported in our district. And tonight, you're gonna hear from several teacher leaders who will also share some of their gifts and talents and the work that they've done to support the creation and the ongoing success that we achieve through the SMART goal process. So on your screen, you'll notice that you'll see some musical notes there. And we're carrying on a musical theme that we actually started early in the summer when we had our administrative retreat. And we set this musical theme, not as much to celebrate music, but to draw the parallel between what happens musically in terms of leadership and what happens in our educational world in terms of leadership. And we're dealing with a great deal of mandates and initiatives from the state and elsewhere that compel us to change our practice. And much of this is very positive change that will help us improve. And some is change that we just need to learn how to manage, quite honestly. But we know that we have a great deal of power. And if we get in front of these initiatives and we lead, we know that we can come out with improved results on the end. And we're referring to this as orchestrating our future, meaning through leadership, teacher leadership and other leadership, we can make a plan that will help us navigate these initiatives and come out with the best possible student results. And we carried that theme into our welcome back. And it was a lot of fun, and we had a lot of teachers involved in this process of drawing the parallel between music and what we need to do to lead our organization. And we've continued that theme tonight, and we'll be sharing ways that we are orchestrating our future through the SMART goal process. Hopefully, that'll work, and it does. Good. The slide that you're seeing now, jazz and the SMART goal process, may seem like a strange parallel. But for those of you that enjoy jazz music, you'll know there are several components of jazz music that really draw a powerful parallel to organizational leadership. And actually, it was an article that Ann Mitchell, principal at Holton, had sent to me that I read shortly after our presentation, our welcome back. And this article highlighted the parallels between jazz musicians and organizational leaders. And it was Frank Barrett, who wrote the book Yes to the Mess: Surprising Leadership Lessons from Jazz. And this book was referenced in the article that Ann had sent me. And I bought the book immediately and read the book, and it was absolutely fascinating. A quick read, and I highly recommend it. But what Barrett does, he draws a parallel between all that makes up jazz and what we need to know about organizational leadership. And he has an interesting perspective. He was a jazz musician way back when, played with Tommy Dorsey, has this incredible jazz resume. And now he's an organizational leadership instructor, professor. So, and he draws this parallel very interestingly. What I have here is a series of slides that highlight each section of his book. And I'm just gonna briefly go through these, and then I'm gonna pass it over to our teacher leaders, who are gonna share the real work of the creation of the SMART goals at all three levels. So this first one we have here, actually, interestingly, is a quote that we have on the walls of the Administrative Service Center. And the title of the chapter was Mastering the Art of Unlearning. And I'll let you read the quote there that's on your screen. But the idea there is that we need to learn and unlearn and relearn constantly. And the SMART goal process really embodies that principle. Our teachers need to unlearn past practices, relearn new practices, and it's a constant cycle of change that happens. And our students need to respond to that then as well. And when I speak of unlearning, there's only so much time in a day. And if we identify best practices that we want to implement, and teachers decide that this is the way we want to go, there are certain things we need to let go. And that's that unlearning and then relearning new practices. The next section was on affirmative competence and high expectations. And this is something I need to thank all of you for. This board has been very supportive of the SMART goal process. And we've heard over and over again, keep setting those high goals. And we really appreciate that, because it sends a message to us and it sends a message, honestly, to the entire school community, that it's more important to set high lofty goals, really stretch to try to meet those goals, than it is to set goals that we know we can attain. And that's actually built into that SMART acronym that I've shared with you before. But we appreciate that. And jazz musicians do it as well when they have high expectations, because it really is about taking risks. And our teacher leaders that will share with you take tremendous risks, instructionally and otherwise, to drive these goals forward. And you'll be hearing about that tonight. This is one that I find very interesting, the idea of performing and experimenting simultaneously. The idea here is that when we are learning, we can't stop to learn and then implement. Stop and learn and implement. It's an ongoing process. Sometimes we use the metaphor of flying the, or building the plane in flight. And that's the sort of thing we're talking about. The quote here from Donald Shown was from the book The Reflective Practitioner. And interestingly, that book is one of the titles of one of the support seminars we hold for our new teachers. Being a reflective practitioner is absolutely essential to continued growth. So what we expect and what we foster through the SMART goal process is that teachers experiment in their classroom. They find out what works, and they make adjustments, they change as they go. And it's an ongoing process. Action research is an important component to this. Principal Peg Shoemaker, with the master's work that she supports many of our Hudson teacher leaders and works extensively with action research. And the idea with action research is it's not scientific research, it's research in the field that you conduct, and you make adjustments as you go. But it's an ongoing reflective experience that our teachers have become quite skilled in. The next section from Barrett's book was titled Balancing Freedom and Constraints. And when I read this, I immediately thought of something that actually was already mentioned tonight, I do believe, but the idea of the tight and loose continuum. There are certain practices that we need to hold tight to. We refer to the term fidelity to our instruction and interventions. And the idea there is that if there's something that scientifically says this is what we need to do to get the results we're aiming for, we need to hold tight to that. But at the same time, there's certain practices that we want to remain loose with, to allow teachers to innovate and experience and experiment and really practice their craft. There's the art and the science of teaching that fits on this continuum as well, and we're trying to find the balance. Quite honestly, when we began with the SMART goal process, it was a very tight process. And as it evolved, we were able to loosen up and find ways to meet the needs of our teachers, or of our students, rather. And that happens with the teachers. That doesn't happen administratively. The teachers are the ones that find the creative ways to innovate. And often what will happen is these loose practices that are experimented with at the classroom level, eventually, we sometimes adopt those practices, and actually, they become tight practices. You know what? It worked so well, we're all going to do that. And then it's on that tight side of the continuum. And then finally, we have this idea of taking turns soloing and supporting. And if you've ever watched jazz musicians perform, you'll notice that different musicians will step up to solo at different times. And it's almost an organic experience that the musicians have as they find the opportunity to step up and solo. Our teachers do the same thing. Teacher leaders find opportunities where their gifts and their talents can be applied to be the soloist, to be that leader. Everyone you'll hear from tonight, they'll be soloing tonight, sharing some of their experiences. But it's an ongoing, an ongoing experience that the teachers engage in. And then there are also times when they step back and they become the supporters for other leaders to step up. It's one of our biggest goals organizationally, to continually to inspire new leaders to step up and find ways to lead. And again, you'll be hearing that tonight. I'm gonna pass the mic now to Kevin Kanoki, who's gonna share a little bit about the elementary goal. And I'll let the teachers from that point introduce themselves. And when we conclude, I'll be available for questions.
My name is Kevin Kanoki, as Dave pointed out. There's been a lot of talk tonight about music. And I can promise you that I'm not gonna sing and I'm not gonna dance. You don't want that. That would be a bad thing. I was thinking exactly what it is that I wanted to say. And is if we take, if we take a look at the elementary SMART goal, we're gonna start at eighty percent of elementary students will independently demonstrate their grade level proficiency, in writing, I'm sorry. And what I think about is, I think back four or five years ago, when we were doing the same thing with reading. And at first, it was, wow, how do we get there? But through the process of the SMART goal process, we made some tremendous goals. Now we're here, and we're gonna do the same thing with writing. And it's extremely exciting, to be perfectly honest. As a teacher, I walk into my classroom every day, and I self-evaluate. What did I do well? How could I do better? That's my job. I have a limited amount of time in my classroom, and I want to use that time to the best of my ability. That's my responsibility to you and my responsibility to the community. I work for you guys. And so I'm thinking to myself, wow, what can we do? Through this SMART goal process, the district has offered me and many of us opportunities to go to different meetings where we get to meet national speakers. And we learn all these amazing new things. More than anything, what it does, it gets us thinking about the big picture. It gets us thinking about what it is that we can do in our classroom. It's incredibly empowering to think about. So as you hear, as you listen to these teachers tonight, I hope that I speak for all of them when I say that really the SMART goals opens us up, lets us be real teachers, lets us dig deep in making sure that we're doing the best job possible for our kids. That's really what it's all about. I love my job, and here's why. Because every day I get to go in and I get to do, I can do that better. I can do that better. And I try. So, thank you. Any questions for me? Sorry. I didn't dance, by the way.
You say you do dance?
So.
Okay.
All right.
Hi, I'm Linda Schwertl. I teach second grade at E P Rock. And that's a tough act to follow, but I can promise you, I'm not going to sing or dance either. So what Kevin was talking about was that our teacher leadership teams that we have at each of the buildings, we go to these conferences, and then we come back and we meet, and we talk about the goal that we have. And then we came up with actions at our building. And the actions that we come up with are activities that we're going to do to try to reach that goal. And they're personalized to each of the buildings based on student populations. So my slide says passion and purpose. And so I wanted to tell you what that means for writing and how we included that in our actions. Purpose, of course, is real writing for a real reason, instead of just writing for the sake of writing. So we tried to come up with actions that we could do in our classrooms that include that, or that keep that purpose in the writing. And some of those examples would be responding to reading. After you read a book, to show that you comprehend it, you might write something down about it and share it with another. Or something we call exit slips, which we would use, maybe after social studies or science. Right now, we're talking about historic heroes in second grade. And so they might be comparing Betsy Ross with Christopher Columbus, and how are they the same and how are they different? Checking on that, that understanding of the students. And then passion is the one that's really important to me, because I think that's where you find the kids using their voice in their writing. And one of the things that we are doing at E P Rock, we started it three years ago. It's called enrichment clusters. And we had two purposes initially. The first one was to build school community. We wanted all the kids to have a teacher that they could, besides their classroom teacher, that they could know, or a staff member it is too, that they could know really well. And they would, they would go to that person once a month, and they would do an activity, and it would, they would go to that same person. And they would go to that same person throughout their K5 years. Then it turned into creating an all-school writing opportunity. Connecting reading with writing is initially what we did. And we found that we can use that same enrichment cluster writing to meet our goal for the SMART goal. So I have an example of some student writing that we did. And what we would do is we would, excuse me, we would read a book. We had a person who would read a book. And the first year that we did it, we based the books on monthly themes. The next year, we did global themes. And then this year, we are, it's in the making, let's just say. We're trying to do some more prompt writing. But you can see the prompt there from the book Odd Velvet. And this is a first grader writing this. And we let the kids come in and develop mentally what they're ready for. So if they want to draw a picture, they can draw a picture. If they know some words, they can write those. So this student was responding to, what are some things about you that make you different than others? And what can you do to make everyone feel accepted? And he wrote, "I like maps because I am smart." And then how can you make everyone feel accepted? I can say, "Want to join us?" Which is, you know, that just makes me feel so good when I see that. And then we'll see another shot of this same student. And you can see this was from March 2012. And the book that year was for Ireland. The Leprechaun's Gold. And the prompt was, "Whenever you help someone else, and then something good happened." And he wrote, "If I got a leprechaun, I would make him tell me where the pot of gold was so I could buy all the Star Wars things." But you can see how his voice comes out in that and how now he's using speech bubbles. And his writing has changed tremendously. And what the nice thing is, is each of the students has one of these journals and they get it in kindergarten. And since we started this only three years ago, this is that particular student and he started in first grade. And they get to take it with them when they leave in fifth grade. And you have a progression of their writing, which is really a great thing for parents to see. So this is one of our activities for our goal at our building. And it's been a great, great thing for building community and building just that writing piece for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Wolf, first grade teacher at Holton Elementary. And I'm going to piggyback off of what Linda was saying, how each school shares the common goal. But each leadership team at each school has identified specific actions that we're going to take to reach that goal. So for example, at Holton, one of our goals is to work on student ownership of learning. Therefore, our actions include collecting samples and reflecting on their writing throughout the year. For example, in my first grade classroom, we are going to collect samples monthly. And as of today, we just look back at Septembers and having the students reflect on themselves and assess where they were and decide what do I need to do next? And giving them rubrics and specific ideas and goals on where they need to move forward. Another action that we have at Holton involves older students writing with and for younger students. Giving that authentic audience, making it real for them. They could reach out and touch their learning buddy and write for them. Or they can write for their parents, or Mrs. Mitchell, or the custodian. And providing that piece of writing for them. And so they can relate to that person and know that it will reach them, it will go to them. Okay? And by the end of the school year, we hope to incorporate some technology pieces. One of them is using the Voice Thread. It's an interactive technology communication tool where students can publish their writing. And then they can talk about their writing and share it out with their parents, with peers, with grandparents. It's a web-based tool that they can use to share that with. And then we also hope to anticipate fifth graders and at least two students at every grade level videotaping themselves by self-assessing their writing. So they're going to sit down and look at their writing, their monthly writings, and self-assess like where they started in September, what they were writing like, and where they left in June, and how they went from each step and what they gained during that writing workshop time throughout the year and where they've come from. And makes it, just in one month, I've seen they were very astonished today by the progress that they made in just one month. And so it's very rewarding and rewarding for themselves to see that they can make such great gains. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Miller and I am the Hudson Middle School Gifted and Talented Teacher. And today I'm going to talk a little bit about our middle school SMART goal. Last year was the first year that we decided to take on a building-wide SMART goal, which was significant because we do have, as you know, 1,300 students and over 100 staff members. And this year, we decided to continue with our goal of helping all students improve their reading skills and being able to apply those skills in each of the content areas. As you can see, our goal is to have the number of students at the middle school meeting or exceeding their growth target on NWA MAP will result in our school performing at or above the 90th percentile. And what you need to think about, based on national norms, the number of students meeting or exceeding their growth target at a school can be translated into a percentile, which can be used to compare one school to another. So we're looking to have all three grade levels above or at the 90th percentile. As we work to improve our reading skills, we want to remember that this is a really important goal because we're looking at improving all students, having all students demonstrate growth. And I find this personally important because I'm working with students who are already exceeding or achieving at very high levels. And so we want to make sure that those students are improving as well as those who might be two grade levels below. We want to make sure those that are two grade levels above are also showing growth. And we'll continue to do that with goal-setting and personalizing their learning because each student has their own individual goal. And Rachel will talk a little bit about how that is impacted in our classroom.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Brown and I teach math at the middle school. I have the seventh grade algebra students and I also have the eighth grade geometry students. Traditionally, literacy was not a focus in my math classroom. But with our building SMART goal, both last year and this year, all teachers have been incorporating the reading strategies into their daily lessons. So in math specifically, we have been doing a lot of work teaching students how to successfully gather information and read their math books, which is an example of a technical text, which is emphasized in the new Common Core State Standards, which we have been implementing, brand-new this year. Even though my students are kind of a special case because I teach the advanced math classes where students are typically very good students and therefore also good readers, they still struggle gathering information from their math books. It's a very different type of reading than the reading they do in their language arts classroom. So they've really benefited from the daily reading strategies that we've been implementing. The work that all of the teachers have been doing in our professional development and the new strategies that we have been implementing in our classrooms has really changed our teaching for the better. And I think we have seen the positive change reflected in the students. There's been a real significant shift in the culture of our building as a result of our SMART goal as the skills that had been typically isolated to the language arts classrooms are now being integrated across all disciplines. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Josh Elversen, the dean of students at the high school. One of the great things about SMART goals is it allows us to look back and see what we did before and how can we improve. And SMART goal number one primarily looks at the idea of the advisories that we've implemented. We now have it for our freshmen and we also now have it for our sophomores. So we had some background data to look at and then to make further goal settings. So by June 2013, 88% of the high school freshmen and sophomores will meet the following indicators of success. And going through these, it was really interesting because Principal Love went over the state report card. And a lot of these bullet points on here, I think, are also reflected on that as well. So to come up with a group of staff members, put them in a room, and come up with some of the same ideas the state is coming up with was a good validation of what we chose. So remembering that we're talking about 88% of the students, we would like 95% attendance or better of those students. And that is done in the advisories in terms of homework checks and also looking at their attendance. There's actually time set aside so students know where they're standing. Earn at least six credits this school year, so that would put them on track to graduate. That's obviously really important. And taking care of that the freshman year, so they know their pace. Through the advisories, we want that connection to an adult member. We want that not just in the advisories, but the classroom as well and all other staff members. And we're going to get that data through a survey that we administer two times a year. And then zero discipline referrals. You know, again, talking about conflict resolution, some of the circle work we do so that students know the appropriate ways to deal with conflict. Thank you.
Good evening. And no, we will also not sing from The Music Man, although I was in it in the year 1977. So since the early 70s to the later 70s, musicals did improve. I was in the chorus.
My apologies.
I got to ride the train. Cash for the much, okay. My name is Matt Friedel from the high school.
Sylvia Stromal, so from the high school.
And we're here to actually collaborate on the goal for goal number two, which is increasing the college credit options that are over there and having the kids work with that. And the reason that both of us are doing this is we represent two different strands that come along with the idea of challenge yourself beyond high school while still in high school. So what I'll do is I'll be talking about the AP courses and the basic concept for that. A little bit of background, I started AP government four years ago. So I'm sort of like the advanced beginner stage as far as the course. And I think two have been added in since, in the last two or years or so in that particular time period. So kind of giving background of where I'm at. The first thing that we're going to be talking about is one of our objectives is that we will increase the number of exams taken by 5%. Okay, and that's going to be the one. So that can be done a number of ways. It can be done either with more kids signing up for the courses. Or in the case of Riley, you might remember the DECA guy just earlier tonight? He has four AP courses alone, so he counts as four, as you're getting at. So that's an idea of one of the ways that you can do this. How do we do that? We encourage the kids by actually going into the classrooms and letting them know the options that are out there. More importantly, we do offer and challenge them to take the exam. The course itself is rigorous and the exam is separate of the two. And so that's one of the ways to do it is to encourage them to take the exam. You have nothing to lose and everything to gain by taking the exam. And the exam is very, very difficult. Okay, and that's what we would do. And that's one of the ways we can increase the number of exams taken is by encouraging kids to take the classes as well as to take the exam. So that's our first objective. Our second objective would be to maintain our passing rate in our district at 80%. As more kids take the exam, obviously the events, the number of kids taking that are going to be spread out as well. So if we can maintain an 80% pass rate with more kids taking the exams, that in fact is actual growth that comes out of that. A couple of challenges from the AP perspective, that's going to be different from Sylvia when she talks, is we have an external exam that's administered at the national level. And all the kids take it at the same time. And we do not get those results until July. So as far as the improvement on the course, ours is done a little bit differently for the other ones because that's when our data actually comes out. Where we got 80% from is that was our original target. We also looked at our peer districts around the state, who we sort of assumed was kind of that same area. And so we were very confident that 80% is both realistic but also challenging at the same time. Another way that you maintain your 80%, it was so interesting to hear the press and the push for reading. As a district, you should be proud because the same things that they were talking about the elementary school and the middle school, we also do for the AP courses. How do you train kids to study and comprehend college texts is very, very different. So it's been really nice to work on that the last couple of years. So those are the AP objectives.
So last year, they had this AP SMART goal going. And every time I would hear what they were doing to try and increase it, I thought, why don't we also have this for the transcribed courses? And so that's what we added to the goal this year was to make it for all college credit, both AP and transcribed. So our first goal is that we will have a 5% increase in the number of students enrolled in the transcribed courses. And so first, transcribed courses are where the CTE teachers have gone out and coordinated their current curriculum or new classes to be similar and same content as what they have at WITC or CTVC. And so they get the same credit then. And it's really great because the students are able to take a college course in a high school environment. And that really helps the transition to go from high school to college for students who may have been kind of hesitant to do so otherwise. And they start out with some credits as well. So what we're going to do, just like AP, is we're going to promote the classes. And we use advisories as well as prerequisite for these classes. So in advisories, ninth grade, we start looking at their four-year plan. What is it you want to be? How can you get there? And then this is one of the avenues that they can take. The transcribed courses, teachers will be visiting other classrooms and answering questions. And then we'll also continue to explore new options for college credit work through curriculum review process and the technical colleges. The second goal we had was that the students need to maintain an 80% passing rate or a B because we don't have that test that they have in AP. But they do have to get a B or higher in order to receive the credit at the schools that they're transcribed with. And that we're going to do by maintaining a high level of instruction and rigor and also giving student support in the transcribed courses. And then the last goal we had was increase the number of students in college career readiness courses. So identifying correct course placement earlier in the school year using the explore tests and the plan tests that they currently take. And using that data to help the students find what course would be right for them. So that's pretty much what we had.
Great, thank you. Question? Nope? Okay.
Well, thank you very much. And as you can surely see, there's a lot going on in the schools. And our teacher leaders sharing what they did tonight is really just a testament to all the work that happens, not just with the teacher leaders you hear tonight, but all the teachers in our system. So we're very proud and I'd be glad to address any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Okay. I would like to thank all of our teacher leaders for, I know they've done a lot of extra work for this. And I want to thank them and their families for sharing that time with us and for the school district. I thank you very much.
Anybody else? Questions or comments? You know, we do a lot of bragging in this district about our district. And really what this bears out is that we can put numbers to this. We can quantify what exactly the successes that we're experiencing and the growth. And I think that's exciting. And probably the most exciting thing for me is to hear the passion in our teachers, to hear the energy, the positive, can't wait to get to work, love my job type of comments. I think the community needs to hear that. I think, I'm trying to say that right now so the community hears that. Because the district takes some shots sometimes. And I think we ought to understand, balance what's happening with our district in this state. We are in the lowest end of cost and in the highest end of performance in those areas. And I think we just ought to be able to shout that out these doors. So, thank you, teachers. Thank you, administration. Thank you, board leaders, for what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on then to... ACT and Measures of Academic Progress Results, Sandy.
Thank you. Tonight, we come with the measures of academic progress and the MAP or MAP assessment along with the ACT results. To begin, just to think about what we want with assessment. We want our teachers, our staff, our administrators to all be what we refer to as assessment literate. Meaning, we want them to become very comfortable with using data to both examine, to look at how students are learning, and then to also... using data to both examine, to look at how students are learning, and then to also drive their instruction through the use of that data. And so, from the various data points that we have throughout our system, we try to have a variety of data points for our staff to use to make very, very important decisions regarding student learning. When we first talked about the Measures of Academic Progress or the MAP assessment, this assessment looks at especially reading and math in grades two through nine, assessing students in grades two through nine, and then there are some of our sites who are also using the language uses, usage assessment as well. This assessment is considered one of our universal screeners, as we're looking for student performance and determining students who may need some additional support, and/or at the other end, students that may need some additional stretch goals as well. And then it can provide us important information when it comes to academic growth. We've been putting a lot of emphasis on growth as we prepare for the upcoming report cards. The other piece with MAP assessments is just to think about, it's really, again, helping us look for students, the strengths and weaknesses in our reading and math, our programs. And a lot of sites, especially the middle school, I think is our prime example, are starting to use the data to help students set their own goals, which is something we want to see grow again too throughout the district, that students are involved, looking at the data as well and setting goals for themselves, and again, focusing on that student growth factor for both grade levels and the school. So if we start looking at the reading data, I pulled the median scores from last spring, and you can see then from grades two, this is elementary then, grades two, three, four, five, and now since we have data from two thousand and five through twelve, we really can start seeing that, the trend lines that are starting to happen. Grades two and three, perhaps a little, remaining a little flat, but we can start seeing that growth occurring in the fourth and fifth grade levels. And then when I change slides, again, we're still at reading, but grades six, seven, eight, nine, again, if you look overall, the trend data, you'll see a nice rise in scores. If we shift to math, grades two, three, four, five, again, if you look from start to end, you'll see some nice trend lines going in an upward direction, and then also in math in grades six, seven, eight, and then nine for the middle school and high school. Gives us some nice pieces. The other piece this assessment does provide is strand data, so we can look at student data and program data by strand and also look for some of those strengths and weaknesses. The ACT, most of us are pretty familiar with. This is a curriculum-based assessment that measures college readiness. There's a score of one through thirty-six, and in the Midwest, this is a popular assessment for colleges and universities. Most of them require this assessment as one of the entrance criteria. In eleven, twelve now, we know that our data for Hudson High School is an average score of twenty-three point six compared to a state average of twenty-two. I mean, you can see the last few years, we've kind of hung right at that same, same level. So we did some of our comparisons, like we tend to. First, the Big Rivers Conference, we are ranked number one in our composite score this year, twenty-three point six. Our percentage this year is only sixty-five point four. Just note that the last two years, we've been more at that seventy percent, seventy-one, seventy, seventy-one percent. So that's something we'll need to keep monitoring, but we're hoping that it's a blip in the radar. Another comparison we often use is our comparable size districts of Franklin, McQuanico, Germantown, and Menominee Falls. Again, ranking number one of those comparable size districts. And now this year, I added one more additional column in the next slide, adding a comparison point of our composite score along with our total education cost per member. And this was taken from DPI, but note that DPI is always a year behind, so this is twenty-ten, eleven data. But just as Tom has said earlier, our taxpayers definitely get value for their dollar when they look at our per pupil cost and the performance that our students provide. And then our last one, we always also then also go out and search for the highest performing school districts in the state, and this is where we always keep having our own kind of SMART goal as far as we're going to, going to get up there with the big guys one of these years as we keep working on our system. So you can see that Whitefish Bay tops with twenty-five point nine with, compared to our twenty-three point six. And then again, comparing their cost per pupil to Hudson's. We continue to work with our ACT. As you heard the teachers just share, there is a series now of assessments kind of called the ACT package. And so it's the explore in ninth grade. Tomorrow will be the first day our ninth graders take that explore assessment, the plan test, then in tenth grade, this is the second year now they'll be taking that, and then the ACT. So once we get all those data points in place, it'll help us have a nice scope of what's going on with individual students, that we can really monitor both in the classroom and individual student, what's specifically needed to raise that achievement across, across the board. Any questions on MAP or ACT?
Questions, Lynn?
Sandy, I know you said this, but can you repeat it again? The percent tested, how, how is that number derived or why, why is ours so much lower?
This past year would indicate that the, out of our eleventh and twelfth graders, we had a lower percentage of students taking the assessment. Now, we haven't done any digging into why that might have happened. There might be more that decided, no, I'm not going to go on to a four-year, I'm going to go on to a two-year, or they decided to go straight into worker military. But we'll see this year if, if we can encourage more students to take the assessment, obviously, and then see if our, our percent, yeah, if it's a trend or if it's a kind of a blip on the data.
Great. Any other questions at this point?
We'll let Diane switch out. The next report is regarding the new school report cards. I'm going to ask Dave Grambo to come back up and join me, and Corey McIntyre is sitting right there. To say the least, this is very new information, some very complicated calculations, and between all three of us, we're going to try to answer your questions this evening. Have to remember to click. All right. Wisconsin is in a major time of transition when it comes to accountability. Tonight I'll be sharing information regarding one of the new reform initiatives, the school report cards. The district looks forward to the opportunity to examine and use the new accountability data to improve student achievement and student learning. But a cautionary statement, the change being shared tonight is part of a two-year transition. We know it'll move again once the new assessments, the new smarter balanced assessments are in place in twenty-fourteen, and we really have no certainty that even next year that they'll look exactly the same, because in just the last two weeks, they've moved. So just to know, it's a transition time, and we're going to share what we have with you tonight, but we, we're completely uncertain as far as what's going to happen the next two years. So when we look at the transitions, I'll just give you a little background. The U.S. Department of Ed offered states the opportunity to apply for flexibility on certain provisions of the No Child Left Behind Act. Wisconsin submitted such a waiver and it was approved. So the report card is now part of that accountability reform. And some of the major changes besides the report cards that are included in that transition are current Wisconsin state standards, new Common Core state standards, Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Exams, or WKCE, to smarter balanced assessments. This one isn't as large, but you'll see later on, it's a big deal for us. Cell size changed from forty to twenty, and this is in regards to subgroups. So if we're looking at anything that deals with students with disabilities, English language learners, our ethnic and racial groups, economically disadvantaged, now moving from a cell size of forty to twenty before they look at that data and determine if it's a possible deduction. The major transition in the report cards is the new college and career readiness benchmarks. The new higher benchmarks are more closely aligned to national and international expectations and are comparable to the National Assessment of Educational Progress Cut Scores. The new benchmarks will serve as a bridge to the more rigorous smarter balanced assessments, which will be introduced in twenty-fourteen, fifteen school year. We expect that the WKCE scores for this past year across the state will show a decline. And here's kind of a graphic to help explain that a little bit. If, I just need your eyes for a second. So if this is the temperature, you can report it out in two ways. You can say there's Celsius or Fahrenheit. The temperature doesn't change, but there's two different ways to report it out. This is what's going to happen now to our students. The student abilities haven't changed, but there's two ways they're going to report it out. The old WKCE cut score and now the new higher cut score on the new report card. So hopefully they can just kind of use that as a little analogy to compare. So when we look at the new accountability system, there are four priority areas, which we'll go into more detail in just a moment, and then three engagement indicators. I want to stress that we're not talking percentages. Again, that's a difference from the old system. We're talking points. And it gets difficult, because it's talking about a hundred-point scale, so it always looks then like a percentage. But everything shared is going to be in points, not percentages. So, priority area one is on student achievement, and the purpose of this area is to measure the level of knowledge and skills among students in the school compared to state and national standards. The score represents a composite of grades, so here's the shift again. WKCE, when I'd come to report, you'd see third grade scores, fourth grade scores, fifth grade scores. Now at the elementary level, they take all of the third through fifth and look at the achievement and come out then with the one score. And they do the same thing. This forty point six out of fifty is points for all third, fourth, and fifth graders. And then the middle school report, obviously then will be all sixth through eighth graders. So very different system of looking at how to calculate that piece. What they do is they give points. They still have the advanced, the proficient, the basic, and the minimal, and you get points for how many kids you have in those categories. And then they've looked at an average over three years. So it's, as I said, it's a very complicated calculation that we, we haven't quite figured out how to replicate yet. All right. The next priority area is student growth, and this describes how much student knowledge in reading and mathematics changes from year to year. They only use the WKCE for this piece, not the, the alternative assessment, because there's no way to measure growth in there, and it does not also apply to high schools, because since there's no WKCE at the ninth grade, there's no comparative group, there's no way to show growth. So this is really just a grade, an elementary and middle school priority area. Again, you get points for having students move from one level. So let's say from proficient to advanced, you get more points for having that change of level, and/or you get points for moving kids up within a level. So that's how they determine again that growth factor. The next area is closing the gaps, which you can kind of get a little bit of, I'm sure you recognize that we're trying to look then at all of the subgroup data. So we're looking at how students, how schools that are closing those gaps, and we're looking at the subgroups of, again, students with disabilities, English language learners, low-income students, and all of our racial, ethnic groups. And they compare them to comparative groups within the state. So how did our students in those areas do compared to similar groups within the state? And then they, at the high school, you can see, oh, now I'm going the wrong way, David. You can see that they have graduation rates. So again, they have a diff, that's only for the high school, again, looking for how our students in the subgroups are doing compared to others in the state. And the final priority area is on track and post-secondary readiness, and this is, the state has decided that these areas, so you can see graduation rate, attendance rate, third grade reading, eighth grade math, and ACT, those are considered milestones to predict post-secondary readiness. So if you're in an elementary building, you'll be looking at attendance rate in third grade reading. If I'm a middle school, I'll be looking at attendance rate in eighth grade math, and if I'm in a high school, I'll be looking at graduation rate, attendance rate in ACT. So it depends on what level you're looking at. But you can see then, again, they're looking at some points as far as participation levels, our graduation rate, as well as the number of students in, in our ACT, using the amount of twelfth graders that have taken the test. And again, you get points for those, for those indicators. And then the last area that is called student engagement indicators, this affects pretty much all buildings. We're looking now at test participation, so that's percent of students who actually took the WKCE. Absenteeism, they want to see no more than thirteen percent of a school's students chronically absent, which they define as missing school at least sixteen percent of the time, or you can see five points are deducted. And then dropouts, no more than six percent, six percent of our students can be dropouts, or again, five points are deducted. So it's, comes quite a, quite an affair. All right. Then you'll see on the report card that all of these points then are kind of calculated in some kind of almost magical calculation, and then you come up with this overall accountability score and rating. And in this example, this school received a seventy-nine point five. And so there'll be the five categories from fails to meet up to significantly exceeds expectations based on your points. And this will be then for every school in the system across the state. And then the final slide really is to show you how it all comes together. You can see in that upper right, the priority areas, student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and on track, then the student engagement indicators, and then over to the left, the accountability score. We do believe that the data provided can, provided some valuable insight into a school's strengths and weaknesses. And as always, the district staff will use this data in combination with other school data as we proceed to internally work with the data and set goals. The school report cards will go public on October twenty-second, and that will be our first opportunity to collect some comparative data and bring that back to you. The administrative staff is currently working on key communication with our staff, with our parents, and with our community. Obviously, this is a huge change for everyone. And links are already up on our website that provide some of this information. Once again, the next two years are a huge time of transition, and adjusting to these higher expectations and benchmarks is not easy and will take time, but it is necessary if we want to raise the achievement of our students and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just, one question, and I know you went to Sandy, so I apologize. Just, can you just walk me through that timeline again? I know when you started the presentation, you talked, I think it was twenty-seventeen, it was, but they were, they were looking back, it's going to be a retroactive one-year collection of data, is that?
The new assessments, the smarter balance will come into place in twenty-fourteen, fifteen.
Twenty-fourteen.
So we have these two years with the old WKCE, and then we'll have the new assessments, and there'll be something similar to what you're seeing, but obviously it'll be based off of a new assessment.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mr. President, just want to reiterate, this is a transition period, number one. And number two, I think Sandy's analogy with the Celsius and Fahrenheit was a very good one, because it doesn't mean that student performance has changed. It's really how you look at student performance. So we'll see that drop in scores. We're used to having very high scores, and we're going to see a very significant drop. That doesn't mean the scores have changed, again, it's just the rating scale has. And at this point with WKC and without changes to WKC, it's very difficult for us to move that bar even higher for ourselves. When we get to the smarter balanced assessment, that bar, that upper end of the test will be much wider, a wider band. And so there will be more, more for us to approach and set goals towards.
Tom?
Yes, it's Pat.
So, are we being assessed from last year, whatever information we have, or is there a special, is there going to be a different, another test two years from now that will be different? But right now, we have to use what we have?
Correct. The smarter balanced are in process of being developed. And so we have to currently use the old assessment, the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts exams, until the new ones are ready to be implemented.
And so this, you said one's going to be open to the public on the 22nd of this month?
The report cards, the samples I showed you now will become public information so that we can see all of our schools' data.
And then next year, in October, again, there'll be another report card?
Correct.
And basically using the same criteria that we are for this year?
That's, we're assuming so, but it could change on us after then.
And then in 2014, there, it will be something different.
It'll still be a report card, but now it'll be based on the new assessments.
There will be some new stuff to, then to assess. Three years from now to this year, we won't be assessing the same thing. Okay. You got it.
So moving target.
Mr. President, I'm looking at this slide having to do with the overall accountability score and rating, the 79.5. And I'm looking at, you know, the, certainly our schools won't be down in that lower level. But what, what happens? Do we, do we know that yet in terms of, is this to serve up something that's going to be posted? And it'll just be made available to the public and sort of let the public deal with, with those ratings? Or is there going to actually be a?
We are working on kind of a guide for parents or a letter to parents. There's also going to be articles in the Star Observer, working with the Star Observer on the information. But you're correct. My understanding though is if you do fall in the bottom two categories, there is some state support, obviously, that comes into play at that point.
Okay. And that's sort of vague right now without?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Very good job. Thank you. Moving on then to salary and benefit comparability study, et cetera, et cetera.
Are you tired yet? This is a lot of material here, but we'll make it through. The comparability studies of salaries and wages and benefits are part of the employee handbook provisions adopted by the Board of Education in January of 2012. And in those handbook provisions, the board provided that such studies would be done periodically to maintain the district's ability to attract and retain high-performing employees. The teachers, the comparability study regarding teacher salary and benefits were reported to the Personnel Committee on August 7th, to the Finance Committee on August 27th, to the Full Board on August 14th. The counselors, psychologists, social workers, nurses study was reported to the Personnel Committee on September 4th, and you'll hear that report tonight. The coordinators, supervisors, and the other, the next study on support employees, those, that, those reports were presented to Personnel on October 2nd. And those two studies will be reported to the Full Board tonight. There, these are all reports, and no board action will be taken tonight. I'll review the, the three studies in this order. First, the counselors, psychologists, social workers, and nurses. This is a group of student service professionals. Secondly, I'll review the study on coordinators and supervisors. And then thirdly, the support employees. I will not be reviewing every page. And I've worked with Diane to display the pages that I'm referencing. The board, the board have the complete documents. And the complete documents will be on the district's website along with the earlier teacher study that's already posted on the website. Of course, if you have questions on any particular piece of the report, we can, we can go to that. So starting with the school counselor, school psychologist, school social worker, and school nurse comparability study. Okay. The, this study complies with the Board of Education's provision in the handbook for the compensation process for teachers. Again, the goal is the attraction and retention of highly qualified, high-performing teachers and other employees. This part of the handbook refers to base salary being subject to negotiations. This part of the handbook provision is not applicable to this particular group of employees, with the exception of the school nurses. The three of the four positions are not and have never been certified as a union. So are not subject to the negotiation process as teachers are. This study, as with the teacher study, focuses on districts of comparable size, high-performing districts of comparable size, and districts located within 30 miles from Hudson. So looking at the introduction to this particular study, all of our comparison districts employ school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, and school nurses. And in Wisconsin, it's important to know that school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers must have earned a master's degree before they can be licensed to work in the public schools. The same is true in Minnesota, with the exception of social workers who can be licensed and work in Minnesota schools with a bachelor's degree. In both Wisconsin and Minnesota, nurses can work in public schools with a bachelor's degree. So there are differences in terms of the level of education required to be licensed among these professions and between the two states. In all but one of the comparison districts, we found that the counselors, the psychologists, the school social workers are placed on the teacher's salary schedule to begin with and provided additional compensation for days beyond the teacher days. Most typically, a per diem amount is calculated. And most typically, psychologists, counselors, social workers, and nurses work several more days beyond the teacher's number of days. Hudson similarly places these professions on the teacher's salary schedule. And we similarly provide a per diem, and in Hudson, for 10 extra days. However, unlike other districts, Hudson then provides a $3,050 responsibility pay amount to the salary. And this responsibility pay is provided for the frequent extension of the workday, being on-call for student and other emergencies, and acting as an administrative designee in a variety of capacities. You'll see when we look at the data that this additional responsibility pay is very helpful in terms of our competitiveness with our beginning and our top salaries. The, when you, when we look at the chart, it basically represents the data associated with school counselors and in some respect to additional contract days or counselors at a particular school level. And the number of additional days for psychologists and school social workers in some districts vary from the number of days provided to school counselors and are sometimes provided only on an as-needed basis. And we saw, as we collected this data, that due to, for economic reasons, there has been from year to year some reduction in the contracted number of additional days and the replacement of the kind of as-needed language. But in Hudson, it's 10 extra days for the counselors, psychologists, and social workers, five extra days for one of the nurses. And the, the school nurses are treated differently in nearly half of the comparison districts. They either do not have a particular salary schedule or they're placed on a salary schedule that's different than the teachers. So it's, it's a unique group separate from counselors, psychologists, and social workers. In several districts, we found that they are paid hourly, but with a certain number of hours and/or full days to work. Similar to approximately the other half of the comparison districts, Hudson does place their school nurses on a teacher's salary schedule and provides one of the nurses five extra days. The responsibility pay is also placed on the nurses for similar reasons. Because of the differences in how school nurses are compensated and because of, they can be employed in Wisconsin and Minnesota with a bachelor's degree, their salaries, days, and per diem calculations are shown separately. Okay, moving to the first chart. And I will need to go through each of these charts unlike the other reports. But they're, they're smaller. The first, the first chart shows the counselors, psychologists, and social workers salary ranked by per diem. And the reason that we chose to rank them for you by per diem was because there's a considerable range of number of days that these professions, these positions work for the salary. The number of days ranges from 183 to 202. You can see that on the chart. Hudson is 202. So we're at the very top of that range. So it's really more accurate and appropriate to look at the per diem. If we look at the masters, because remember, that's the entry level for these professions. If we look at the entry-level masters, we are above the per diem, 216 versus 210, but not significantly. So we're kind of at or near that per diem. Significantly means, and this is how we chose to interpret it, means more than three districts from the median. And if we look at the top now of that schedule, that's the second chart, the chart on the right there. If we look at that, and again, looking at the per diem, we are below the per diem, but not significantly. So at the entry, above, but not significantly. At the top, below, but not significantly. Okay? I'll move into the nurse, nurses then, presented a little differently here. And, and we do show first the entry, the low salary. Number of days, again, the range is pretty great. So it's really more appropriate to look at the per diem amount. But the ra, the number of days that nurses work range from 183 to 210. And on the low end, the particular nurse represented for Hudson in this chart works 192 days, and that is the same number of days that teachers work. And we are above the per diem, but again, not significantly. 206 per day versus 194, above, but not significantly. And moving on to the high end of the nurses' salaries and making the same kind of comparison, the median per diem is 360, and the Hudson per diem is 329. It's below, we are below the per diem, the median per diem, but not significantly. And in summary, for this report relative to the, to the salaries, all four of these professions at the start are below and at the top, but both not significantly. So above at the start, below at the top, but not significantly. And that is, represents all four. Summary relative to benefits, the, all four positions substant, are provided benefits substantially similar to those provided to teachers. And that's what happens in other districts. There was only one other district that provided benefits to a single school nurse under an administrative contract. But otherwise, like Hudson, the benefits for these positions are the same as teachers'. Are there questions about this report?
Nancy, I just want to clarify something. So if you go back to, I think it's the nurses.
Okay.
And it's the top salary where the per diem is 329. Is that correct, what I've got? And the median is 360. And you're, you're using this significant below or significant above by the number of districts, not the amount of money.
That's correct.
So there would be another way to look at it when you look at 360 per day as the median compared to 329 per day?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And of course, the board could choose to look at it either way. Okay. Okay, I'll move on to the next report then.
Any other questions?
Yeah, any.
Before we go on? I think it's the intention of this district to be competitive, as you had stated before. And what that means, I think, is that we don't want to be at the high end. We don't want to be at the low end. We want to be somewhere in the middle. So, thanks.
That's right. Okay, if we look at then the coordinators and supervisors, this study again complies with the handbook provision for the compensation process for teachers. But like the previous report, the coordinators and supervisors in Hudson are not and never have been certified as a union. So the negotiation provision of that part of the handbook does not apply. Everything else does. Of course, we, the board is committed through this provision to attract and retain qualified, high-performing coordinators and supervisors and, and to periodically conduct comparability studies. And the comparison districts are similar to those that we used for the teachers. Looking at the introduction, there are 12 coordinators and supervisor positions in the district. All are non-administrative and salaried exempt employees. All but two are 12-month positions. One of the 12 positions reports to the superintendent. Eight of the 12 report to a district-level administrator. The remaining three report to a coordinator. Seven of the 12 positions supervise and evaluate other employees. And the same seven have significant budget management responsibilities. Six of the, looking at their credentials now, kind of a profile. Six of the 12 employees in the study are credentialed at the master's level. One is certified as a professional in human resources and holds an administrative license. Three are credentialed at the bachelor's level. Two have associate degrees. And the remaining employee in the study has completed technical college coursework. Looking at the funding for the positions, two of the 12 positions are funded through community services user fees and not through the general fund. One of the positions is covered by the food services fund and not by the general fund. Two of the positions are partially reimbursed by the state. And in gathering comparables, it's, it's very evident that districts in both Wisconsin... both Wisconsin and Minnesota, they differ in size, even though we have a comparable size range, they do differ. Um, and they differ greatly in organizational structure, how they, uh, what they call these, their positions, who these positions report to, how they, um, divide up, uh, the particular responsibilities. And, um, we, we could find that all of these responsibilities and services are present in all of the comparison districts, but only when, uh, the position duties, the level of implementation, and the title substantially matched, um, did we include them in this study. Uh, we also addition, in addition to school districts, we did find comparable positions regionally, um, for the, uh, communications coordinator, the human resources manager, and the financial services manager at Hudson Hospital. And comparable positions were also identified for the human resources manager and the financial services manager at UW River Falls. And so they, therefore, they are included in the study for those particular positions. And by way of example, we're just going to look at one page of this, um, report, the first page actually, uh, which shows, um, uh, charts for our IT coordinator and our financial services, uh, manager. Um, the, uh, looking at first the IT coordinator and looking at Hudson's salary of eighty-one, one forty-three, the median, you can see there are quite a number of districts that have this same position at this same level, um, is eighty thousand, eight thirty-nine. So the, um, salary for this position in Hudson is at or near the median salary. It's actually within one district, uh, uh, below or above the median, that's kind of the definition for at or near. But it's important to also see that, um, in five of the comparison districts, this position is actually an administrative position. Looking at, uh, financial services manager, and you'll see each of these, as you go through the report, are unique, but, um, uh, formatted similarly, the financial services manager, um, has, uh, a bit of a shorter list, but, uh, still significant. Uh, the median is seventy-two, nine forty-eight, um, and in Hudson, uh, considerably less than that, sixty, sixty-six, uh, thousand. If you look, if you count up, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, it's significantly below, uh, the median. Fifteen of twenty-four of the comparison districts have a similar position. Um, and if you look at, uh, several of the positions that are listed, um, Elm Brook, Eden Prairie, White Bear Lake, um, our position is two hundred and sixty days, theirs is two eleven, Eden Prairie's two forty, White Bear Lake is two twenty-two, and all are paying more, uh, than the two hundred and sixty-day Hudson position. Hudson Hospital has this position, we have, um, seven hundred and fifty employees, um, and Hudson Hospital has three hundred and fifty-five, about half the number. UW River Falls, uh, has this position as well, they have nine hundred employees compared to Hudson's seven hundred and fifty. So that's an example of the content of the report. And I'll move through to a summary then, of the findings of this particular study. Okay? That's further into your record there. A summary of the salary, uh, comparisons then, uh, we have one position, um, you know, of the twelve that are, that is at or near the median, and that was one of the example positions, the IT coordinator. We have two of these positions that are below the median by four to five thousand dollars, the nutrition services coordinator and the school-age care coordinator. Below the median, seven thousand to nine thousand is the financial services manager, facilities and grounds coordinator, IT network administrator, IT software specialist. And below the median, nine thousand five hundred to ten thousand is the HR manager and the facilities and grounds facilitator. We could not do a median analysis, uh, for the communications coordinator, the prevention coordinator, or the school-to-career coordinator for lack of a sufficient, um, sufficient comparables among the twenty-three districts. But each of those, uh, particular positions have notes associated with them, uh, that could help inform the board on a direction to take. Benefit summary. In this district and in the com, comparison districts, coordinators and supervisors are provided insurance, you know, health and dental insurance, and sick leave benefits, uh, comparable to teachers. However, unlike teachers, most of the coordinators and supervisors in Hudson and in the, the comparison districts are twelve-month employees. And they generally have, instead of personal days, like teachers, they have, they have vacation days, and more paid holidays because they work twelve months. And you can see in the report, vacation days, um, Hudson twenty, the most frequent provision for this, these type of employees is twenty. Uh, the range is from fifteen to twenty-eight, holidays from ten to fourteen, most frequent ten, Hudson eleven. Um, the district retirement benefits, um, the most frequent, um, age eligibility is fifty-five, ours is fifty-seven. Years of service, most frequent is fifteen, ours is fifteen. And then, um, all but one of the comparison districts offers post-employment benefits. Um, and the most frequently identified benefit is a district contribution to a post-employment fund. Um, districts vary in how that's calculated and how much they contribute. And this is different than the district's contribution to the state retirement fund. This is something on top of that, but that is most frequently identified as a benefit for these types of employees. Uh, sick leave buyout, um, is the second most frequent benefit, uh, retirement benefit with a cap on the number of days ranging from a hundred to two hundred. Uh, district contribution to health and dental insurance is the least frequent, uh, benefit. And the most frequent com, combination is the post-employment fund and sick leave buyout. And in Hudson, six of the coordinators are provided the same retirement benefits as teachers. However, uh, the other six are provided only the sick leave buyout. The comparison districts, even though we differentiate from this partic, within this particular group, we didn't see that the comparison districts differentiated the benefits. Uh, if we look at, uh, professional development, uh, about a third, um, provide specific contributions, um, to professional development, a variety of examples. And most of the others provide something, but they refer to it as at the discretion of the superintendent or designee. We provide tuition reimbursement, professional dues, membership, uh, in that, in organizations, registration travel expenses, uh, for six of the coordinators, uh, six are provided a lesser amount of tuition reimbursement, professional dues, and a lesser amount for conference attendance. That's the second report, and if you have questions?
Questions? Dan?
Mr. President, just a question that's going through my mind as I look at, um, these different, like, financial services manager for Apple Valley, let's take for example, do we really know whether or not that position is defined the same as, as our manager? Are we making some assumptions that these positions, job responsibilities, and roles, and all of that is comparable?
Well, we gathered, um, again, we, we gathered job descriptions. Uh, we did talk with, um, uh, people in their human resources departments, and in some cases, their financial services departments. And we determined that they were substantially similar. Are they identical? No. But, um, s, but similar enough to put on the list.
Mr. President?
Yes, Lynn?
Nancy, you mentioned, um, in one of the positions that they're partially reimbursed by the state.
Yes.
Can you clarify what that means, or what?
Um, two of the positions, um, are partially reimbursed by the state. One, one is the, um, one is the prevention coordinator. And we did not have sufficient, uh, comparables on that position to, um, determine a median. But, um, this particular position is implemented in this district, um, by a social worker, a licensed school social worker. And because of that, uh, the district is able to recover a certain percentage of that person's, um, salary. Um, and it's by virtue of the particular, um, licensure that, that the person holds. And the other is in the area of the school-to-career coordinator. Uh, there is some, um, state support, uh, for the implementation of that position.
Thank you.
Okay. Others? All right, moving on.
Okay. Okay, let's see here. Uh, support employees. Uh, the board adopted a, um, a handbook provision for the compensation process for support employees. It's a little different, uh, than for the certified employees, but the goal's the same. The goal is to attract and retain, uh, qualified and high-performing support employees. Um, and, uh, the, um, implementation of periodic, periodical, um, comparability studies as well for this group. Now, the comparison group is defined a little differently by the board, and, um, indicates that such studies would focus on districts with proximity to Hudson, so it's more regional than based on size or high performance, uh, et cetera. And also other Hudson-area employers who hire individuals for the same kind of work. If we look at the introduction to the report then. The Hudson School District has, uh, employees, uh, three hundred and twenty-eight support employees in thirteen classifications, and the report says twenty-six specific positions, it should say twenty-seven. So twenty-seven specific positions in thirteen different classifications for a total of three hundred and twenty-eight employees. Support employees are paid at an hourly wage, they are not ex, they are non-exempt, which means they're subject to overtime pay. Uh, three-fourths are school year or extended school year only, so seventy-five percent of the three hundred and twenty-eight work only during the school year, or maybe a few days beyond that. And the other quarter are employed on a twelve-month basis. And the data in this report comes from CISA eleven, because they collect this data on an annual basis, some of it. It is from district or other, um, entity websites. Uh, it's from employee handbooks, there's also, um, a document, Wisconsin Office of State Employment Relations Compensation Plan for twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, rather, and/or direct contact with individuals who handle this information. So there's a whole lot of verification directly with people, um, in the districts or in, or the other employers. Um, tho, the wages represented are those currently being paid this year, twenty-twelve, thirteen. And in smaller school districts, if there's one employee implementing, um, if, if there's one employee implementing more than one position, and we did find an example of one person implementing the payroll as well as the benefits, then that hourly wage in this study is placed in each position. And if, um, if there's only one wage reported, because there's no wage schedule, then that wage is recorded as both the base and the top. And, uh, we run across that fairly frequently. Where the position does not exist, then the comparison district or the other entity was, is not in the list. We'll do an example again, just, uh, the first page of this report. The chart shows, um, two positions, two support positions, accounts payable specialist and payroll specialist. We show the base wage and the top wage for each, median's at the bottom. And in this, uh, particular example, for the accounts payable specialist, the median is seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents per hour, and that's, and we are the median, seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents. So we are at the median, at the base wage, at the recruitment, uh, level. And at the top, uh, the median is twenty-one eighty-three, and, and our, uh, pay is twenty nineteen. We're below the median, uh, but not, not significantly below, as measured by not more than three districts or employers from the median. Uh, payroll, uh, specialist, um, again, base wage, top wage. The median is eighteen dollars and seventy cents, Hudson pays seventeen, uh, twenty-one. In this example, um, it is, we are significantly below, we're between four to five districts or employers from the median. So at the base for the payroll specialist, we're significantly below, uh, the median. Um, at the top, um, we are also significantly below, we're more than three districts or employers, uh, from the median. The median is twenty-one eighty-nine, and we pay twenty nineteen. So that's the example, um, of the charts in the rest of the document. If we move to a summary. Let you kind of get there, you gotta go through several pages. On this, in this particular summary, you can see the definitions of at or near being within one district, below or above. Above or below the median is two or three districts above or below, and significant is more than three districts above the median, or more than three districts below. And so, um, if we look at the base wage first, that's the top of the chart going across, uh, we have one position significantly above the base wage, we have six above, we have eight at or near, six below, and five significantly below. At the top, this is the retention, uh, area, uh, we have one significantly above, we have two above, we have nine at or near, seven below, and seven significantly below. If we kind of tally them up, at the base, we have fifteen positions at or near, above or significantly above, and eleven positions below or significantly below. And at the top, twelve positions at or near, above or significantly above, and fourteen below or significantly below. Overall, um, it, it looks as if the district would be, is more competitive for recruiting, uh, these positions, and less so for, um, retention. Then if we look finally at the benefit summary then, support employees are, are provided the insurance and sick leave ben, sick leave benefits substantially similar to teachers in Hudson, and that's also true in the comparison districts, insurance benefits, sick leave. And, um, they, uh, the school-year, uh, employees are generally provided, uh, personal days, and you can see the range there, one to five, most frequent two, Hudson's two. Vacation days- Vacation days are generally applicable to 12-month employees. Another correction, New Richmond corrected their data late after this had been provided. They do provide vacation days. It says New Richmond, zero, so take that out. The range is five to 27. The most frequent is 10 to 20, dependent on longevity. Hudson is 10 to 24, dependent on longevity. And these are for 12-month support employees. Holidays for school year, most frequently, five. Hudson, four. 12-month, most frequent, 10. Hudson, 11. Retirement benefits, most frequently, age is 55. Hudson's 57. Years of service, most frequently, 15. Hudson's 15. And most employers do offer some form of post-employment benefit to support employees. Most often, it is a sick leave buyout with a cap on the number of days from 75 to 120. Hudson cap is 120. And then the employer contribution to a post-employment fund. A few, less than five employers contribute to a post-employment fund. You can see this is different than the coordinators and supervisors and the teachers as well. But there are a few, and it could be, you know, a trend. And then employer contributions to health and dental insurance. We did not find a school district or another employer that reported providing this benefit. The Hudson Hospital benefits information was not provided to us, so it's possible that they do, but we don't know. And in Hudson, the support employees are provided only the sick leave buyout, not anything above the state retirement contribution as terms of a post-employment or fund or health and dental. That's the support employee report. Are there any questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
Okay. All I've got to do is tell you next steps here.
Yes, thank you.
That's it. Okay, if I can find my next steps. Here we go. Going back to the tentative timeline then. The next steps, again, these are just merely reports at this point. The Personnel Committee will hear a report on the administrator comparable study done by an outside consultant on November 6th. Tentatively, we would be reporting that, or the outside consultant will report that to the full board November 13th. And that would complete the board hearing all of the reports about all of our employees. We would look to the Personnel Committee on November 6th and to the full board on November 13th to set the criteria and to give the administration a direction, some kind of a plan direction, so that we can go back then and work on our recommendation. We would tentatively, again, be prepared to provide our recommendation for the compensation for all of the employees to Personnel on January 2nd, Finance, January 7th, Full Board, January 8th, and would hope that the full board could act on those recommendations on January 8th.
And then Nancy?
Yes.
The question would be, when would implementation be?
If the board, whenever the board were to act, it would be retroactive to the beginning of the school year or retroactive to July 1st for those 12-month employees.
Any questions or comments?
Okay, I've tired you all out. Okay.
Thank you, Nancy. Moving on to use of Fund 80, community service funds. Tim Erickson.
Okay, I'll give you an update on the community service fund and how it works internally as far as funding, fund balance, revenues, expenditures. The community service fund revenues and expenditures are specifically connected to activities, programs, and services. And those programs and services serve residents. They serve non-residents. They serve adults, of course. A lot of people are familiar with the community education classes. They serve preschool kids. So it's different than the general fund, which is specifically for K-12 education. Some of the positions that are supported through community ed or the community service fund are things like school-age care workers. Our school-age care program runs through the community service fund. Our communications coordinator, who also has duties for coordinating the community education programs as well as facility use. We have the classes that are put on by community education experts in their field that come in from the outside and put on classes. So there are a lot of different activities that are covered under this fund. I think there may be a misunderstanding or misconception on how we can use these funds. But when we refer to the Department of Public Instruction and talk about the community service fund, those revenues expenditures are specific to that fund. So we can't, for instance, just take dollars from the community service fund and move them over to the general fund and reduce our expenditures. That is not allowed by the state of Wisconsin. The only way that that would be allowed is if the all-community service activities ceased to exist. So if you don't have school-age care, if you don't have the community ed swim programs and the classes, the gym use, all of those other things, they would have to be discontinued. It would be like closing a business down. And then if there's a residual balance or fund balance left over, if it's positive, then it would be transferred over to the general fund. If it's negative, it would also be transferred to the general fund, and the general fund would have to pick up that difference. So again, the only way for those funds to be transferred is if the fund ceases to exist. And that's when you discontinue all operations. One of the funny things about that is if the community service fund operates and has a deficit fund balance, then the general fund has to cover that. So it's kind of a one-way transfer. The general fund can't pick the fund balance of community service. However, it has to cover a deficit fund balance. You know, so again, this fund, when you look at this fund, it's based on user fees. The revenues in that fund are user fee-based. Districts are allowed to charge a user fee to cover all costs or a partial amount of the costs of the community service activities and programs. Districts, in fact, do levy. They have community service levy. Hudson does not. We have not levied for community service. In fact, our program overall is self-supporting and has been for many, many, many years. So there are no tax dollars going to support community ed. So those are certainly some very good factors, and we're able to provide these programming activities, but yet it's self-supporting. So with that, I'd open it up for questions.
Questions?
Is there a balance in that fund?
Yes, there is.
How much?
There is $1.2 million of fund balance there.
So a fund that is designed to be self-supporting, so you collect as much as you need to cover the expenses for the fund, to cover the expenses of the activities. Why would we have $1.2 million in the fund then?
Well, that's built up over a longer period of time. And there are ways that we've tried to reduce that. For instance, school-age care fees have been kept lower, and the fund balance has fluctuated and has gone down over time.
That sounds like a lot of money sitting in a fund like that. So I would wonder why we aren't reducing the fees enough to balance the fund?
Well, if you look at the current budget proposed for community ed, and again, this is part of that reduction in fund balance over time. Over the past number of years, we've had a deficit budget to start to address that and reduce that fund balance.
Okay, do you have a target number that you would reduce the fund balance to?
A target number would be probably keeping one years of operating expense, one to two years of operating expense in that fund.
And how much is that?
I would have to calculate that.
Okay, can you email me that?
Pardon?
Can you email me that figure?
Sure.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Pat.
Okay, I'm not sure. I guess, is our hot lunch program in that, in fund balance?
The child nutrition or the food service program is a separate fund as well. And that one also is primarily user fee-based.
Oh, so it's different than what?
It's not this fund.
It's not that one?
Right.
This one is just?
Just covers the community service activities like school-age care, community education classes, you know, things of that nature, that address non-K-12 activities. So they're covering many different age groups up to adults and different classes.
Mr. President?
Yes. Just one comment on this. This is, you know, former treasurer. This has been kind of the, one thing that we've been doing more of is making sure we allocate. It's hard to kind of allocate all the costs, like for instance, school-age care, to really allocate the right facilities cost. So that's something we have been working on to make sure that, you know, that we allocate some costs that normally you would think would be in the general fund, but saying that these costs are part of providing those services. That's something that we've been spending more time on to get a truer allocation of costs. And that was one of the issues that was hurting us before is that we weren't really allocating our costs, you know, as appropriately as we probably could.
I think that's a good point. I know that in the past, and I don't know what the current status is, but basically only direct costs were being covered, meaning just the cost to put on that program. But what wasn't taken into account, for example, might be insurance, might be utilities for rooms, things like that. Those are all real costs as well. And so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. So we would like to draw those down because that would, you know, any drawdown we can do there to a certain, you know, target would help us, you know, so.
Comment? Anything else?
Mr. President? Tim, we are restricted on what we can allocate there, though we can't just divert cost from Fund 10 over there.
Right. They have to be costs that are related to community service programs.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on then. Tim, you're still up Act 1032, an emergency rules update.
I'll give you an update on, primarily, this is covering the Dane County Circuit Court decision that recently was decided on. And it also covers emergency rules that were issued by the Wisconsin Employee Relations Commission. So I'll start with that portion, which are the emergency rules, which really is the shortest piece of this. The Wisconsin Employee Relations Commission issued emergency rules based on the Acts 10 and 32 decisions. And they issued those rules to give districts guidance on how to determine what base wages should be under the new law. And so that, again, was an issue. It was an emergency rule issue which had a definite life. So those rules expired on September 15th. And again, this is just an update to let you know that at this point, districts aren't operating under those rules. Districts don't exactly know what the rule is or what the guidance is at this point because it's expired. Employee Relations Commission is considering providing guidance, again, renewing. I don't know if they renew the emergency rules or if they make them permanent, but hopefully at some point in time, we're going to see guidance on that because districts do need guidance on how to proceed in that area. The second part of this has to do with the Judge Colas out of Dane County, his decision which took parts of Acts 10 and 32 and declared parts of those acts as unconstitutional. And the parts that he declared as unconstitutional are prohibition of fair share dues. And that has to do with if you're not a member of the union, you would be required to pay a portion of union dues. And prohibition of voluntary dues deductions. Again, districts were prohibited from collecting union dues via paycheck. The annual certifications election requirement, which says that unions need to recertify annually, and then a prohibition of bargaining on anything other than base wages. Currently, the Attorney General for the state has requested a stay in the judge's decision. And if the stay is granted, that means we're status quo. So Acts 10 and 32 remain in place until another court decides one way or the other. We're hoping to see a decision somewhere there this month. Currently, the latest development is on Friday. The judge granted an extension of time to the parties bringing the suit before he makes a decision on the stay request. There are several provisions that remain unaffected by the judge's decision. So things like limiting contracts to one-year agreements, that still remains in place. The elimination of binding interest arbitration, that also remains in place. And mandate to adopt a grievance system, which a district has already done, that remains in place. And the mandate that employees, the employee share of WRS be paid by the employee also remains in place. So there are bits and pieces to this law. Parts of it that were declared unconstitutional, other parts that were not addressed. And so now the next pieces, there will be a decision made on the stay requested by the Attorney General, and then it will work its way, continue to work its way through the court system. So any questions?
Okay, questions? Okay, moving then to the final report item. 2012 and 13 budget and levy update. Tim?
This is an update, just updated before your final approval on October 30th. And if we look at the summary of the major budget assumptions, we're assuming level student membership units in this budget. Increase in equalization aid of approximately $1,500,000. And also a decrease in federal grants of $1.1 million. We get the final state aid amount, which will be coming in mid-October. So then we'll be updating the budget again with that final number from the state. The increase in the total levy, so this is both general fund and debt service, is approximately 2.3%. And again, if you note, the 2011 CPI, the Consumer Price Index, increased 3.16%. So we're about a, just almost a percent below the Consumer Price Index increase. Because the district underleveys so much, there's approximately $275,000 of state aid that is lost, that's available as a one-time aid this year. But because of the underlevy, that is unavailable to the district. And I'd just probably drag your attention down to the bottom, the very bottom of that page, because a lot of this information is fairly similar to what was presented at the annual meeting. But you can see the debt service levy is going down, and St. Cray Meadows was taken out of that. What we projected for debt service for St. Cray Meadows has been taken out. And the general fund is moving from $24,670,000 to $24,901,000. So you've got an overall levy increase of 2.3%. And probably just open it up for questions.
Questions on the budget? Sandy?
You said St. Cray Meadows has been taken out of there. You're talking about the interest that was included in the last budget for that?
that was included in the last budget for that?
The, the debt service.
Oh, the debt service, okay.
What it projected as.
So when you make that statement, I can assume that there's nothing in this budget left. Everything has been taken out of any category that originally was in for St. Cray Meadows, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thanks for your reports, move to citizens' requests to speak, I see some are coming. Non-agenda items. Okay, we've got Jeanette Coons, ask you to come forward, give your name and address.
Mr. President, I requested to speak on the topics for action, not non-agenda items, would that be later?
These would be, yeah, these, yeah, I'm sorry, you're, you're correct, this is a non-agenda item time, so.
Thank you.
You can have, be seated, and we'll get you back. All right. All right, we have Kurt Weiss.
My name is Kurt Weiss, I live at 613 Cedar Drive North in North Hudson. Couple of things that I wanted to talk about, first off, President Holland said that the district has taken a lot of shots this evening, that's what he said. I beg to differ, it's not the district, Mr. Holland, it's the people driving the bus that have taken the shots, and many of you have deserved those shots, that you've taken. The district has many fine teachers and administrators, I know a lot of them, I had dinner with a couple of them this evening, my kid's got a fine education in the Hudson School District, and I don't have any qualms or any beefs with the teachers or the education at the district, it's many of the decisions you guys have made, and you've taken the shots, not the district, so don't lump the district in with whatever shots you might take. The other thing is, you know, I was hoping that the district would, or the school board, pardon me, would reach out and start to be open, start to communicate, reach out to the people that disagree, see if there's a compromise could be reached with regards to space in the district. I don't see that, what I'm looking at is a whole agenda full of ways to stifle free speech within your, your board, within your board, that's just so sad that you guys didn't learn anything from two years of putting your heads in the sand, trying to buy a dog track, I mean, it's just amazing that you guys aren't learning anything. The thing that I really wanted to talk about this evening, though, is our friend, Mr. Walzburger, he's back in the back, maybe he should have a more prominent role up here at the table since he is so involved in our district. I think we spent over $100,000 with Mr. Walzburger last year, that's amazing, I mean, I just want to congratulate him on such a nice year, you know, here in our district. Just wanted to recap some of the things he was able to accomplish in our district, just a, a ruling that one of your board members didn't have a conflict of interest with regard to the dog track, when in fact, she did and does have a conflict of interest with regard to that. I want to congratulate Mr. Walzburger on the public flogging of Board Member Sandy Gurkey on the 10th of July, that was, and, oh, don't let me forget, April Simmons, who was also publicly flogged by Mr. Walzburger at that meeting. I want to congratulate him on writing all of the responses for the requests for information that people send in, that Ms. Sweet can put her name to, I'm sure he spends a lot of time doing that, I want to congratulate him, he's making some good money on that, too, many of them denied, with the laurally speak. Oh, well, don't let me forget when he was here on July 10th, and said that, that many, that there were certain people in the community making blatantly false statements about board members and district administrators, and Mr. Walzburger didn't have any names. How do you do that? How's Mr. Walzburger come and say that there are people in the community making blatantly false statements and provide no names? Maybe he'll provide names this evening of those people making blatantly false statements. Mr. Walzburger also said at the, at July 10th meeting that he, he, he would encourage aggressive action be taken against those said individuals, maybe he can tell us what that aggressive action means. Is that suing people, suing the taxpayers? Who's going to pay for that? That's what I would like to know. Who's, who's going to pay for Mr. Walzburger taking that aggressive action? So, I mean, there's lots of things that Mr. Walzburger did, I want to congratulate him on a great year. Many of our taxpayers have lost their homes this last year, a number of foreclosures in the Hudson School District, while Mr. Walzburger made double the average household income in the city of Hudson, just with our district, just with our district, double the household income in the city of Hudson. So the question I would have, I do have one question for Mr. Walzburger, of all the money that he's made over our district over the last 10 years, and especially, this was a bonus year this last year with the dog track and trying to remove Sandy Gurkey from office, I'm just wondering if, as one of those people that's been forced to, to provide all that huge funding for him, if he would just, for Christmas, just send me a box of chocolate. Could he do that for me? I'm just asking Mr. Walzburger if he'd just send me a box of chocolate.
You're out of order, Mr. Weiss, if you'd like to stay with an issue, you're welcome to continue, otherwise, sit down, please. Thank you. All right, we've got, any, any, we've got one more, Michelle Blyven, other option, Blyven. Mitchell Blyven, I'm sorry.
My name's Mitchell Blyven, I live at 1011 State Street, over in River Falls. I'm here to inquire about the dog track. Since the city denied your wish to rezone it, we were wondering what your, what your further actions, what you intend to do, how you intend to deal with the problems of overcrowding the school. I personally attended Hudson High School, while I definitely felt that it was crowded at points, you know, the pictures of the hallways, some of the classes, I didn't find that it inhibited my personal education, but we were wondering what you guys plan to do, we seen that there's the other options that you guys mentioned, the, the year-round schooling, other options, half and half days, or do you guys intend to pursue the dog track?
Okay. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, you may sit down, and we'll try to respond. That's the, that's the, that's the extent of our citizens' requests to speak at this point, board comments, our responses, our administration. I'll address the, the last one with Mr. Blyven. We, you're going to hear tonight about a process that we're going to, we're going to talk about instituting towards a solution, and I think what you're asking for is a solution, and we don't have a solution tonight, but we'll talk about a process and a basic timeline to try to get to that solution, so, I'm afraid that's the best we can do tonight, but that is, that is the next step for us. Other comments?
Can I make a comment?
Certainly, Sandy?
Um, Mr. Blyven, I, I want, I want you to know that, that has also been a concern of mine, since I've been on the board, is what is the plan to resolve immediate crowding issues, understanding that any building project is going to be three to four years down the road. I've had a lot of people ask me that exact question that you're asking tonight. I want you to know that I have asked to have that subject put on an agenda for these board meetings a couple of different times in the last six months, and I have been denied having it put on the agenda for discussion. Now that the dog track is out of our way, I hope that we can move very quickly to come up with a solution, because I know I've got grandchildren in these schools, the Hudson High School and the Hudson Middle School need help, and they need it now, not three to four years from now for another building project. So I want to ensure you that that will be my focus going forward, to solve the immediate space problem in whatever way we can do it. Thank you.
I'll assure you that it's all of our, it's all of our purpose is to get to a solution, but it's a process, we don't jump to solutions, we go through a process in this, and you'll hear about that, so, we're proactive in this, and we're very, very aware of the need, obviously. We had hoped to have a solution with the dog track, that was the, that was the community's solution for us, as borne out by the referendum, however, and so, we didn't move to any other, any other planning at that point, because it would be unfair to the, to the voters in the community who decided that they wanted to purchase the dog track. So, we will move forward now, and we will have a solution, and the community will be part of that as well. Mary?
I think you made the clarification that I wanted to talk about, alternative solutions that Board Member Gurkey responded to, and we will be pursuing those as we move forward, as we promised to her, following the rezoning decision. I want to go back to Mr. Weiss's comments about our attorney, there are some misunderstandings that are, have been communicated. The attorney fees that we have are not about all of the issues that were brought up, in fact, we have multiple attorneys that we use from Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney, the firm that McWalzburger works for, but we also use other, other attorneys who have different specialties. So when you look at the bills from that firm, they include charges from other attorneys. Secondly, I, I think it's hard for the community to understand the breadth of legal fees, or legal advice and work that a district, any district, has. You know, when you think of any organization or company with 750 employees, there are significant personnel issues that require legal advice and legal work. We also, as a school district, have student issues, and again, we have significant work that needs to occur in that area as well, and so, any comments about all of our legal fees going to one attorney is just absolutely not correct. I don't know, Tim, if you, if there's anything you want to add to that?
Right, there's, you know, we use, as Mary mentioned, there's a, there's a wide variety of issues that we use legal, legal assistance on, and we also, one of the other ones that, that I would add is a contract review for vendors, if we enter into various contracts with the vendors, we either have, a lot of, many times have the attorney draft the agreement, or at least review the agreement that's being provided by the vendor. Some of the litigation, some of, some of the things that we do is we will use upfront, use attorneys upfront to prevent litigation in the future, which does certainly have a savings, I don't know if one could put their finger exactly on it, but it's always better to have the legal information representation upfront versus having it later when you're going down the road of a lawsuit, so some of that's preventative, and it does result in savings. We have very, very few grievances from employees on an employee level, and I would have to credit a lot of the work that's done in the legal area for that as well, so, just a couple of other additional comments.
Mr. President?
Yes, Pat?
Um, I think I was at that meeting in July 10th, I'm sure, positive I was, I do not ever remember our attorney telling us or advising us to remove Sandy Gurkey from this board, and I don't think anybody really, um, has ever, you know, made that statement of removing Sandy from the board. If you want to, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I, in my mind, have never had that in my mind.
I think you're right, so. Any other comments or questions, or comments about the citizens' messages tonight? It's interesting, because we have a situation in our community where this district is attacked, when the attack has been at, directed towards the board, it affects the rest of the district as well. We have teachers that feel those attacks as well, and quite frankly, many of the, the attacks are unfounded and without real merit, without merit. Oftentimes, the truth is not always complete, and it's interesting, because we have this situation in a district that's high-performing at low cost, and you have to wonder, you know, what's the objective? What's the agenda? I certainly want to work with our community, would like to work with our community in terms of, if they have suggestions, if they have real offerings as to how we can improve our educational processes and outcomes, I want to hear about that. To just, to come up and, you know, and blame and defame and throw mud and things like that, ultimately, what is that doing for this district? How is that improving us? So, I'll offer that to the community that will listen, and, and will continue to hear it, I'm sure. So, thanks for that, we're going to move on. We have topics for action beginning, and we've got a number of policies, six policies and one procedure, and making just an editorial comment prior to this, that should be understood that this was a request by this board to ask our attorney to look into different policies for potential revisions, based on some actions that we'd had, we had taken as a board regarding certain conduct, and so, we'll hear that tonight, and I'll invite McWalzburger to the mic.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Okay.
You just stated that this was a request by this board, can you tell me when that request was voted on, motion second and vote?
The, the board meeting was July 10th.
There was no motion second and vote at the July 10th meeting to do this.
There was, there was a decision made by this board to, to move forward with requesting this, and that was done.
Um, I believe Mr. Walzburger said that, that revising these bylaws and these rules are, was an option, and I think he went around and each person got to say something. The only one that said anything about revising these policies was Lynn Robson, everyone else made a different comment. There was no consensus, there was no vote taken.
That's stopped my understanding, so.
Well.
Ask the boards, should we ask the board?
So I'm saying, Mr. President, there's consensus in revising these policies.
Pat?
Yes.
Lynn, you'd already said so. Dan, there was consensus, Brian?
I agree.
All right, point made, thank you.
Moving on.
Well, I just want to start off by saying first that I am privileged to work with this board, I am proud of the services and the advice that I have provided to this board, and I do not back down one bit from any of these comments that are made. I believe that I have served this board very effectively for 16-plus years, and again, I'm proud of the services I've provided, and I thank you for that opportunity. I want to talk about the policies, and we'll start in order here, I'll track the order on the agenda. I believe our first number is Policy 1125, and that deals with public suggestions and complaints. You have the new language in front of you, and really, the objective of this policy, first of all, you'll see it's consistent with the advice and instruction that I provided to this board during the in-service that we had, I can't remember if that was April, May, or June anymore, I apologize, but during that in-service, I gave advice to the board on how to process complaints properly, and really, what we're looking at is making sure that those complaints get to the right person, sorry, that they get to the right person promptly, so that they can be addressed appropriately. Board members, you each have expertise, but your expertise is not in the area of investigating, and that's why you've long had policies that say you're not to investigate personally and individually. That's a matter that's delegated through the administration. We're not trying to stifle free speech by this, we're trying to make sure that complaints get documented, routed to the right people, and addressed promptly and appropriately, and that's what this policy is designed to do. I've also included new language, which replaces outdated language in Procedure 1310.1, which is into this policy, and then I've expanded on some of that language. The, you'll see the main paragraph that was added just essentially clarifies the process for dealing with complaints, the next paragraph clarifies the process for dealing with concerns, again, we want to know if there are problems so we can address them, and then clarifying that board members may not individually investigate a complaint, and in the same paragraph, we have confirmation that the board president may authorize an investigation into allegations of improper conduct by another board member, or the superintendent. I do not believe you need to have that in policy to have that authorization, I believe that authorization is clear under Wisconsin law, and nonetheless, there was an objection raised by Ms. Gurkey, I think it's fair to say, let's put it in policy and eliminate any kind of question that any person may have perspective. that any person may have prospectively. So that's Policy 1125. I'm not going to go through it in detail, but I'll take it. Questions, once we've gone through each of the policies, we'll come back and take questions you have on any of them. Policy 1230 is the next one on the list, and really, this is just replacing outdated language with language that is based on commonly-used standards in the educational setting. What we're trying to really do is prevent any kind of material or substantial disruption in the educational environment. That is the standard that the U.S. Supreme Court has long laid down in the case law for schools. The second numbered paragraph there states that we're making sure we have an environment that is conducive to learning, and there's no interference with the ability of staff or board members to perform their duties. Again, that's the standard for determining whether you have an appropriate educational environment. The following three are just common sense. We're not going to interfere with anybody's right to enter or exit from property, a facility or school vehicle. If law enforcement or a school official says you must leave the property, the policy confirms that you must, and then you can't use any kind of intimidation, threats, or physical force. There should be non-controversial, this is a very common sense update to your policies. Procedure 1310, this really does tie back to the first policy I reviewed, which is Policy 1125. And 1310 frankly was outdated in several respects. I've eliminated much of the language. Some of the language that I struck just is not required by law, not required by policy, not required by procedure. And moreover, it, the way the policy, or excuse me, the procedure was written in the past, it unnecessarily gave away some of your authority, and it arguably gave to any person the right to request a hearing before the board, whenever it appears necessary. A very ambiguous standard, it's not clear in whose mind it had to appear necessary. So we've eliminated that language, scaled it down to its bare bones, and that's what you have left in revised 1310. I want to make two other points really quickly about this. One, the revised Procedure 1310 really focuses on making sure that complaints are processed in accordance with the chain of command. The Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the U.S. court that is one level below the U.S. Supreme Court, it's an appellate court, has jurisdiction over cases arising in Wisconsin if they're at the federal level, and that court has approved chain-of-command policies such as this one. I also want to make one note here, that the last sentence in the first paragraph, which says complaints are not resolved at the point of origin, must be submitted in writing before further processing. That's not requiring that things like discrimination complaints be in writing. You have other policies that would trump that. So, just that clarification. Policy 2300, Board Staff Communications. We have new language here that strengthens and clarifies your existing language. This policy recognizes that the board is in a position of authority, and employees, including building principals, may feel intimidated and not understand that individual board members do not have authority over them. The crux of the changes here really deal with the visits to schools. There are different types of visits you can have. There are informal visits, when you as a board member say, you know, as a board member, I just want to be more informed, and I just want to informally go and check out what's going on in the school. And that's the first sentence. When you're interested in doing that, you just contact the superintendent and request that a visit be scheduled. Then there's the more formal, I'm evaluating, I'm inspecting, something's not right, I want to go in and do a kind of an assessment of what's happening in this building. That's the kind of visit where you need board approval to do that. And so you just come in front of your fellow board members and get that approval. And then there's the final kind of visit, when you just visit because you're a parent, because you're a grandparent, because you're a community member, because you're going to the football game on Friday night, whatever it might be, just not in your capacity as a board member, you've got your community member hat on, and the policy doesn't govern those kinds of visits at all. Those are, as they always have been, you're free to do that. Social interaction piece, I've made some changes to that, just to really emphasize that records requests have to be processed through the superintendent's office, and that individual board members don't have the right to access what I'll refer to as private data, or data that come from certain personnel records or pupil records. So that's the crux of the changes there. I note that on the visits to the school, one last point, I have given a kind of a trump card. The board has authority, of course, to overrule the superintendent. If the superintendent said, no, you can't visit, of course, the board could overrule that. Now we'll get into some more media changes. Let's go to Policy 7600, which is the School Board Meetings Policy. The first change under regular meetings is one, it's a practical change, to allow you to more easily address situations when you might not be able to have a quorum present, for example. So rather than having to have the board pick a new date and time, pretty hard to do that without violating the open meeting law, now your president and the superintendent, or if the president's not available, the vice president and the superintendent pick a new meeting time. The other changes on that first page are minimal. Moving down, under the open session language, if we can, if you could go down on the screen to the section for open session. The last sentence, there's a new sentence been added there, that says, "Any school board member who intends to record an open meeting of the board, a committee of the board, or a subunit of the board, must notify the superintendent and the board in advance of each meeting." And to be clear, any public meetings, any person may record a public meeting. That's a right by statute under the open meeting law. But the concern here is that if a board member is doing that, and the board member's attending that meeting as a board member, you're acting with your board member hat on. And now you are creating a record, which is subject to the public records law. So if one of you were to, for example, record a meeting, then any person could request a copy of that recording, and you'd have to provide that. The district needs to know for its own liability and compliance with the public records law, if and when somebody is recording, and that they're going to be doing that. And that might lead, for example, to a number of decisions. The district or the board might decide, well, in that case, maybe we should make an official recording in case of a request, or maybe we're just going to put that individual board member on notice that they're, if they're recording, their recording might be subject to requests. I also think that there's something to the notion about surreptitious recording, that that is demeaning and degrading to the office that each of you hold, and I would hope that that's not occurring. So we want to make sure that we're upfront with each other about that. Going forward to preparation of the agenda. What I've done with my proposed changes here is to put the board members on equal footing with citizens and eliminating any kind of ambiguity. There's no automatic right to put an item on the agenda, even by a board member, and that's important, because there are things that simply are not appropriate for some to be placed on the agenda at different times that you're operating. For example, if something, placing something on the agenda would result in a claim of retaliation by another person, we obviously want to have the ability to say, no, we're not going to put it on the agenda. So I've just added some clarifying language to that, and again, put board members on the same footing as citizens. Board member attendance at meetings, if we could go forward to that. What I've done here is change, the first change really just simply tracks the statutory language. The second change here is designed to ensure compliance with the open meeting law. Sometimes a board member will want to attend a committee meeting, even though that board member does not sit on the committee. And that's fine. You have a right to do that as a member of the public, just like any other member of the public does. The concern comes in, though, that if we have a quorum of the board present at that committee, we're obligated by law to notice it as a board meeting. And so we have to know in advance with enough time to give the proper notice. And that's what this provision is designed to do, to make sure that the superintendent, as your designee there, has enough time to give proper notice if there's going to be a quorum present at that meeting. Going forward, under demonstrations, there's a new section I've added here, under demonstrations. Could put that up on the screen. And really, the purpose of this section is, it's stated right in your policy, it's, one, to prevent any form of intimidation that might discourage citizens from attending board meetings; two, to prevent conduct that interferes with a citizen's orderly and unimpeded right to enter and exit a board meeting; and three, to prevent conduct that creates a disruption or disturbance before, during, or after a board meeting. Now, I'm sure that there will be some folks who will say, well, this is a violation of free speech to do this. It's absolutely not. This is a content-neutral provision. The courts have repeatedly upheld provisions of this nature. It's viewpoint-neutral, it's a time, place, or manner restriction. We don't care if you hold up a sign saying, "The school board is the best in the world," or a sign that says, "The school board is the worst in the world." It doesn't matter. There's just not going to be any holding up the sign, there's not going to be marching or demonstrations. We're going to make sure that people feel comfortable entering and exiting your board meetings. If you go down further, under public comment, I do, did have one error, and it does, it shows up on yours too, and I apologize, it's a typographical error, it says president or president officer. It should obviously, obviously say president or presiding officer. So I apologize, that error is mine. Moving forward, under governance of the manner in which speakers address the board. The initial changes there, I don't think are going to raise any kind of controversy, we're changing people to citizens, the fact that we're all serving as examples. Down, I have made a change that says citizens may not raise or comment on personnel concerns during a public comment period. This has to do with privacy interests, defamation concerns, and the fact that there are alternative avenues of communication available if individuals have concerns or complaints about personnel matters. And we cover that right in our complaint policy, the first one that we addressed there. I've added some clarifying language. I really don't think that it changes the policy per se, but it clarifies attacks on a person's character or integrity. I consider that to be a personal attack, but we're just clarifying that those types of things are not permissible. All right. Continuing down, the, I've added some language saying that individuals can't speak on substantially the same issue at three meetings, and really, this is just designed to allow the board to focus on its business and avoid being burdened by cumulative comments. We welcome, obviously, we want new ideas, fresh ideas, fresh comments, we want input, but it makes no sense to have somebody stand up and give the same comment, meeting after meeting after meeting. You'll see that I have struck, as we go down, the language on board forum that used to appear in your policy. I last reviewed this policy back in 2004, and a few months after I reviewed it, the Attorney General came out with some advice discouraging the use of language such as board forums, and that advice from the AG's office, and now the Wisconsin Department of Justice has gotten stronger, so we, I recommend that that language be struck. So that is a review of Policy 7600, and we'll next move on to 7601. Policy 7601 deals with board use of electronic communications, and the policy is designed to do a number of things. One, to decrease the likelihood of any violation of the open meeting law, to ensure compliance with record retention requirements and the public records law, to establish parameters, of course, for the appropriate use of electronic communications, and then also to address concerns about board members forwarding emails without applying a public records law analysis, which is required. There are a number of changes here, I'm not going to walk through all of them. In large measure, I have eliminated outdated language, in some cases, language which is far too narrow to really promote compliance with the open meeting law, and substitute that with the new language you see in your materials. You'll see, one of the main, one of the big changes here is in the third paragraph that says, "The district will supply an email account for each board member. Board members must use the email account that's supplied by the district to communicate with each other, with the superintendent, and with citizens on any issue that's directly or indirectly before the board, on any issue that may come before the board, and on any issue that directly or indirectly relates to the district or its schools, board members may not delete such emails." This is not an uncommon kind of a provision. It really goes to the fact that you have record retention requirements when you are emailing about school district business. About your private things, that's yours. We're not worried about that. I'm really looking at school district business. When you're dealing with school district business, you're creating a record that's subject to the public records law, and we want to make sure that we're in compliance with that. You're going to be subject, when you're using the district's email system, of course, to the same standards as the employees, that you'll have to review and agree to the appropriate use policy, and you don't have a reasonable expectation of privacy and communications that you're having about school district business. Again, they're not personal communications, that's school district business, just like members of the administration don't, and teachers don't, and so forth. The, I mentioned, again, the fourth purpose of the policy is to address the issue of board members forwarding, or disclosing, or copying other communications, and then providing them to third persons without applying a public records law analysis, just really reiterating that the processing of records should go through the superintendent's office. That's what your policy is. And so that's reconfirming that in this policy. All right. Moving forward, school board expectations and ethics. And this policy has been changed, or is being proposed to be changed significantly from the policy that you had. And this comes right out of events that we, you as a board, have addressed, and that I've addressed through investigations. And the policy is really broken down into two separate sections, or three, I take that back. One deals with expectations, the other deals with requirements, and then finally, we deal with consequences. We want to clarify expectations. When I went through the policy, I thought it made sense to provide additional guidance, so everyone knows where they stand. And I think most of these are really common sense. Many of us would not think twice about these. I'll go down to the last bullet on the page, because that's probably going to be one that raises some question, and that is that board members are expected to refrain from taking any action that undermine, that may undermine an action or initiative that has been approved by majority vote of the board. This really goes to the notion, and it's reiterated later in the requirements, that the board speaks with one voice after a vote is taken. And that's similar to existing language you had about not compromising the actions of the board. There, I'll cover this in a little bit more detail here. You'll see in the latter parts of this policy, I've added some language that says that board members are required to work cooperatively and respectfully with each other to establish effective policies, and to implement initiatives and actions established through majority vote. Now, some would say, well, I voted against an action, I don't have to implement it. I can just do whatever I want to undercut that action later. It's simply not true. And let me give you an example to highlight this point. Let's say the board enters into a contract with vendor A, and the contract requires the president and the clerk to sign off on it. The board votes five to two, and the president and the clerk vote against it. Just because they voted against it, neither the president nor the clerk can refuse to sign that contract. Likewise, just because they voted against it, neither the president nor the clerk may take any action to impede the contractor's ability to perform under the contract, or to impede the district's ability to fulfill its contractual obligations, once the board has approved that contract. That is the concept. Once the board has acted, it's not in your purview to say, oh, I'm going to undercut that action. You may disagree, you may state your disagreement, but you may not act to undermine that majority vote of the board. So let's go to the, some of the others of the must, the board must do the following. And I'm not going to go through all of these, I'm going to just go through ones that I think are likely to raise questions. About halfway down the first page under the must, there's some language that says, "Board members must refrain from contacting any district vendor about any matter arising out of or relating to district business, unless the board has specifically directed the board member to make such a contact, or the members, the president of the board. As the board president, there's certain authorities that go with that by statute, including contacting contractors such as legal counsel." The reason why this is a critical provision, first of all, if individual board members are out there contacting contractors, or excuse me, vendors, it puts those vendors in an awkward position. It blurs the lines of authority, and frankly, it pushes vendors away from working with your district. And I've seen that happen in other districts. It's simply not a wise practice to have individual board members contacting vendors. And I think in cases when that's happened, even in your district, if you were to ask the vendor how that made them feel, they'd say, very awkward, very uncomfortable. All right. The, there's a provision that requires board members to work cooperatively with the superintendent and treat all district employees with understanding and respect. That doesn't mean you have to agree with the superintendent. That means we try to act in some kind of a cooperative manner. We understand that everyone has a lot on their plate, and we don't expect them to drop everything for one individual person's request. If the board as a body votes and says, superintendent, I want X on my desk, my desk, excuse me, by 5:00 p.m. tomorrow, the superintendent better do that, if it's by majority vote of the board, but not necessarily by an individual board member. There's language at the bottom, which will certainly raise a wrinkle. I saw that there was a press release by Board Member Gerke objecting to this provision. There's a provision that states that board members must recognize that the superintendent does not serve at the pleasure of individual board members. She serves at the pleasure of the board as a body. And, to the extent permitted by law, the board encourages the superintendent not to respond to questions or requests from individual board members that are unduly burdensome or otherwise inappropriate. To be clear, the superintendent must still comply with the public records law, but an individual board member can't go in and say, Mary, you need to provide me with a list of the following 10- But an individual board member can't go in and say, Mary, you need to provide me with a list of the following 10 things by 7:00 AM tomorrow. You just can't do it. No person individually has that authority. She's your CEO. As a board, you can direct her. Individually, you cannot direct her, and it's important to understand that differentiation. Now, the very next bullet point is to refrain from publicly making allegations against any district employee. And this doesn't mean you can't criticize an employee in your role as a citizen, provided that criticism is based on data that you've received privately in your role as a board member. And the concern is that when you're making allegations against an employee, and you are a board member, you're going to be viewed as acting as a board member, and you increase the likelihood of litigation against the district. It's not that these allegations can't be brought forward. It's that, it is that there is an appropriate time, place, and manner for bringing allegations forward. In light of the investigation that was conducted, I thought that it would be appropriate to add a provision requiring explicitly that board members be honest and forthcoming in all communications with other board members and with district employees. I mentioned the provision earlier, a couple bullets down. It requires board members to work cooperatively and respectfully with other board members to establish effective policies and implement initiatives and actions established through majority vote. Continued language, similar to your previous policy, where you can take no action to undermine the administration. Again, you can disagree, but that's different than undermining or impairing the administration in the performance of duties. Couple bullet points later, reiterating the point that we, board members can't simply forward communications, copy, or disclose communications from the superintendent without certain permissions. And that's, again, underscoring the fact that there's a process that has to be followed, and we process records requests through the superintendent's office. I'm sure that you'll have some questions on that policy. I just didn't want to take a ton of time. I'd rather respond point by point to any questions that you might have. A lot of it is very self-explanatory. You're aware of the full context and the history that led to a number of these changes being recommended by me, and I want to make that final point, that these are simply proposed changes based on my recommendations. You have discretion to accept or reject as you see fit. You might say that a recommendation I've made makes you feel uncomfortable. It's too stringent. Feel free to say that. Feel free to say that this is not one particular thing, or two particular things, or whatever, that an area where we don't want to go down that path, that is absolutely fine. These are simply my recommendations based on the meeting on July 10. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay, questions or comments or concerns? I thought we'd take questions from the board person, then we'll take citizens' requests to speak, but I'll just note that our procedure for citizens' requests to speak is that forms must be submitted to the board secretary prior to the topic of interest being introduced by the chairperson. I have one. So let's take questions from the board, and then we can have citizens' requests to speak on this.
President? Okay, one question is, it looks like all of these are just revised policies that we already had on the books. There aren't any new added here, or is there one, any of these totally new?
That's an excellent question. All the policies are simply being revised or proposed for revision. There are no completely new policies here, so you would not have your normal process you have to follow going through two meetings. You could do that if you want to, but you're not obligated to go through two meetings. This was not brought to a committee, as is often the case, because the board, by consensus on July 10, asked me to revise and bring it back to the board. But to be clear in response to your question, none of these are completely new. They're just revisions of existing policies.
Other questions?
Mr. President?
Sandy?
I have a statement I would like to read. Many of these policies are very scary. They're scary for the public. They are scary for school board members, and they are scary for anyone who cares about effective management of our schools. Board members must beware. According to these policies, if we get a call, an email, or a face-to-face contact from a citizen, and that person mentions a complaint, concern, or criticism about the school district, this policy requires us to stop the conversation. We must then inform the person that we will be documenting the communication and providing the party's name along with the communication to the superintendent. Can you think of anything that will more quickly stifle public involvement in the school district? And Mr. Holland has stated that these policy changes are an attempt to deal with the newest board member. That would be me. But think about what you're doing long-term. Think 10 years or more into the future. You are turning over all of this board's rights and duties to the superintendent. You'll be tying the hands of every future board and every future board member with these coercive, restrictive, controlling, and limiting policies. You will, by policy, be obstructing current and future elected officials from doing their duty. Now I will address the chair regarding Mr. Walzberger. These policies look like his handiwork. Being the recipient of his toxic actions in the past, it appears that he gets hired to stifle dissent. He advises school boards and administrators on how to control rogue school board members. I have openly questioned the veracity of some of the advice that he has given this board. His recent calamity with the South Washington School District, where state officials found his opinion to be highly questionable, and then his dismissal of legal, as legal counsel of the Farmington School District, would appear to substantiate my concerns. And then, of course, there's the incorrect information he publicly stated at the July meeting about the board's options for punishing me for my transgressions. He said the board could remove me from my position, but then he stated that my sins didn't call for that extreme punishment. When I pointed out the fallacy of his statement, he cited removal by a circuit court judge. But I wonder if Mr. Walzberger can produce even one case in the state of Wisconsin where a circuit court judge removed a sitting school board member for a disagreement over a school board policy. I wonder if he has ever won a case in Wisconsin himself, using failure to follow a board policy as cause for removal. Because his July actions didn't elicit the desired response, this board has now sicced him on me again. So I would ask, why are you wasting our constituents' money to inhibit the ability for the school board members to perform their statutory duty? The superintendent is not a member of the school board. Nowhere in Wisconsin statutes does it stay that board members are required to report to the superintendent. She is not our boss. In fact, we are her boss, and she reports to the board. I refer you to Wisconsin Statute 118.24 parent 2 parent B. Likewise, there is no statute that requires a board member to get consent of the board and notify the superintendent if the board member is going to visit a district building. In fact, the statutes say that it's a board member's duty to visit the schools, and I refer you to 120.12 parent 2 and 120.13. Last, I would like to remind you that the superintendent and Mr. Walzberger serve at the pleasure of the board. And remember that I, like every other board member here, holds 25% of the decision to keep them here or dismiss them. You all may not like me. You may wish I would get on board, as Mr. Holland originally instructed me to do before my, even my first May meeting. You may desire that I learn to follow the rules, as Mr. Kaisersot has demanded that I do. You may be frustrated that the threat of being sued by a fellow school board member has not deterred me, which it has not. And I suspect you're very disappointed that the public flogging I was given in July didn't send me running for the hills. So let me put you on notice, Mr. Walzberger, and all the rest of you on this board. I was elected to serve 36 months on this board. I receive more votes than any of you, and apparently, than any other board member has ever gotten coming onto this board. I have now served for six months. For the next 30 months, I intend to remain in this chair. I will continue to ask any questions I think that are important to my constituents. The divisiveness, divisiveness that you are creating in this district works in my favor, not yours. Every time Mr. Walzberger and this board do something outrageous, such as enacting policies designed to stifle my free speech, you drive a bigger wedge into the community. As board members, it is our duty to follow state statutes that govern school boards and individual board members. In fact, page 94 of these newly revised policies state that board members must, quote, "comply with all federal, state, and local laws relating to function and duties of a board member," unquote. I'm asking you to think for yourselves, board members. I'm asking you to look beyond any adverse feelings you have about me. I'm asking you to think about the repressive effect these policies will have on everyone living in the Hudson School District. I encourage you to vote no on these changes until this board and the people we represent have had an adequate time to understand their meaning and the repressive effect they will have on openness and transparency in the governance of the Hudson Public Schools. We owe it to our children, to the parents and voters of the school district, not to gag their elected representatives from openly discussing the critical issues facing our schools. Thank you.
Nick, can I respond?
Yes, if I may. First of all, Ms. Gurke has made a number of blatantly false and inaccurate statements and half-truths. And I'm going to point them out for you, Ms. Gurke. I'm happy to do that. First, you said that if a board member gets a complaint, receives a complaint, or a member of the community starts approaching a board member about a complaint, you have to immediately stop that conversation. I challenge you, where in any of these policies does it say that? It does not. Another example of a half-truth or flat-out falsity. Nothing in here says that you're turning over duties to the superintendent. This is largely in measure what the process has always been. Board members do not investigate on their own. Bottom line, that's not your charge. If there's a complaint, it should be forwarded to the superintendent, to the administration, to investigate, because that's the group that has the training and the knowledge to do it. If you don't trust the administration, that's a different problem altogether. But the fact of the matter is, that is the group that has the knowledge and training to do the investigations. There has been some statement that this will obstruct elected officials from doing their duty. Simply not true. You made, for example, reference to Wisconsin Statute Section 120.12, and I think that this really drives home the misunderstanding that exists. That statute does not say individual board members have the right, or the authority, or the duty, to go and visit schools. It says the board as a body, and I'll read it for you directly. "The school board of a common or union high school district shall visit and examine the schools of the school district, advise the teachers and administrative staff." Doesn't say individual board members. The school board as a body. Huge difference. As a body, you have tremendous authority. Nobody disputes that. I, I work for you. I don't work for the superintendent. I don't work for Mr. Holland. I work for the board as a body by majority vote. That is where the authority comes from. There was a statement, and I apologize for taking your time to even bother addressing this, but I think it's important to address it. There are a couple of statements about me. One, there was, quote, "the calamity in South Washington County." You might be interested to know that the South Washington County School Board non-renewed their superintendent, and in the process, they consulted with the Minnesota School Boards Association. They did not consult with me about that. It's right in the newspaper article. I encourage you to go read the article. Talks about the fact, it's right in, by the way, in that Department of Administration Advisory Opinion. The board had not consulted with me. Had they consulted with me, a different course of action would have been taken. After the fact, I did do my best to argue on behalf of the board for the situation that they were in, and ultimately, a violation was found. But I was not advising the board to go and take the action that they took. And I encourage you, go look it up, get the facts, and then come back and talk about them. I'm happy to talk about the facts. You said that I was dismissed as legal counsel in Farmington? Again, a flat-out falsity. I discharged or fired Farmington. I chose not to work for them. And the reason I chose not to work for them is more individuals, like the one individual in question, who the board was having problems with, were elected to the board. I said, as a matter of principle, I did not want to represent a school board of that nature. And I told them, flat out, I would no longer represent them. They did not dismiss me. Again, it's a matter of getting our facts correct. Very important that we do that. There was a statement that somehow the board is wasting money, or I'm wasting money, and I know there are those comments. The board and the administration determines the scope of my legal services, and unfortunately, oftentimes, those services are generated because of actions that certain board members take. One in particular. The, there was a statement about this removal, that I gave bad advice on July 10 about removal. And I have a transcript of my statements at July 10, and I just want to be very clear in terms of what was said at July 10. Mr. Bell asked me, and is the, if you lay out a continuum of action, would that, meaning disavowal, be the most strenuous or highest level of action that would be appropriate at this particular juncture? I responded, quote, "I believe that that would be the highest level of action appropriate at this particular juncture." Removal is the highest level of action that can be taken with a board member. I do not believe that the actions of Ms. Gurke at this point warrant removal. I never said the board could vote by majority vote to remove you. You know that. And by the way, you started disclosing information you ought not to have been disclosing, because you received that in confidential letter from counsel. So I just, in general global response, nothing in this policy, in these policies, as I've revised them, I believe stifles free speech. Nothing is a significant departure from the process for handling and responding to complaints. Nothing prohibits you from talking to your constituents. It encourages you to talk to them, get their input. But if someone has a complaint or concern, make sure it gets addressed through the appropriate channels. Again, there's a chain of command that we follow, and for a reason. The policies also contain exceptions, by the way, if there's a complaint against the superintendent or the board president. The policies contemplate that, and there's different avenues for addressing that. So I encourage you to look at that. The most significant changes to any of the policies are the one on school board expectations and ethics. And that's simply a matter of whether you want, you feel comfortable with those kinds of explicit provisions in your policy. If you don't, take them out. If you do, I don't think that the vast majority of school board members across the state would have any problem complying with each and every one of these without even thinking about it, because it would just be natural that that's how they would act. Thank you.
May I respond? President, I need to ask a question on the one that talks about the public protest of holding signs or whatever. Can we really keep them off of public property, public, I don't know, I mean, we can do that?
Absolutely. There are different kinds of FORA. The courts engage in what's known as the forum analysis, and you control your school board buildings and the areas outside of that. And again, these are content-neutral, what are referred to as time, place, and manner restrictions. You're not limiting what somebody can or can't say. You're not limiting their speech in any way. You are simply limiting the conduct that occurs. Now, if someone wants to go out on the sidewalk out in front of the school building and hold up signs, that's their right to do that.
Right here, right?
The public sidewalk, off the school property. But when it's on your school property, we have a right to control that. And again, you might say, you know, I don't see the need for that. That hasn't been an issue. It's not a concern. If it's not a concern, you can remove that. You don't have to go that route. But I believe it's conduct that you certainly can control. Again, demonstrations, marching, and holding signs, there's no constitutional right to do any of those things. You have a constitutional right to free speech, but we're not limiting the speech. We're just saying, not on any signs, whether your speech is for or against any given topic.
Okay, so, I mean, here, we don't have a public sidewalk, right? And at the school. It's not a, I mean, there isn't a, consider a public sidewalk that's going in front. It's a public road, right?
I don't know if there's a sidewalk in the front. Actually, there's not.
I mean, not out at the land, you know, on the end of the land, because there's a road there. Okay, so if, hmm, okay. Oh, Willa River would have a public sidewalk, correct? So they, we cannot prohibit them from being on that public sidewalk. But they can't come in the, on the sidewalk that goes into the building. They, one, they would have to stay on the sidewalk that is on the boulevard. That's the pub, that's the city sidewalk. Then they, then we cannot prohibit a sign or whatever. If they want to be holding signs, as long as they're not stopping traffic, and they're not causing any kind of disruption for people to be able to come in and stuff.
Right, that's exactly right. It's like picketing in any form. You know, someone can picket you on the public sidewalk. That's a That's a traditional open, public forum, and we have no authority to limit that. But when it comes to the school district property, there is a greater authority to limit the conduct in a content-neutral kind of a way. Now, it would be a problem if you said, you can come and hold signs on our property as long as they're in support of us.
Yeah, no.
You couldn't obviously do that.
It has to be.
But when you're saying, it's not the speech that we're after, it's the conduct. It's the marching, it's the demonstration, it's the holding signs, things that might have a chilling effect on people attending board meetings. Those are the kinds of things that you can, I believe, address, if you see fit to do so.
Okay. So, we do have the right to stop anything on this side of any public or city or county, you know?
Nick, I'm getting the impression from some that this is a big variation or big change in policy, that from the Saturday morning that we get together every year after the elections to review procedures and policies and for board conduct and roles and responsibilities and so forth. As I've read through these policies, I don't see a great deal of change from what we talked about that Saturday morning. And so, I think it's a little bit to mischaracterize this as a, some drastic change in to the way that we have operated and behaved as a board and as an administration in the past. I don't see a big difference. I know you pointed out one or two, but can you point out any others, or can you comment to that?
President Holland, I would agree with you that this is not some sort of sweeping change to policy. There is a fair amount of clarifying language. This really does capture what was discussed in that board workshop. There are, the most significant changes are on the policy regarding school board expectations and ethics. It's kind of a bullet point policy. You can walk through those and see. I don't think anything in there is earthshaking, and again, I think it's all consistent with items that we talked about. There seems to be a suggestion that this is intended to empower the superintendent or to, you know, give up authority to the superintendent. That's simply not the case. If you read carefully through the policies, I think you'll see that that's not true. Matter of fact, I've added some veto rights on the part of the board. It's a matter of making sure that we have an appropriate process in place so that the board can do its business and function appropriately. If we have one individual, even a board member, impairing the administration's ability to get their job done, you don't move forward. If this board is not working cooperatively and respectfully, you don't move forward. The policies here are really designed to make sure that you have a functional, as opposed to a dysfunctional organizational structure, both at the administrative level and the board level, and to tap into your relative responsibilities and expertise.
Mr. President, thank you. Nick, you know, as I look at these different policies and sort of what we're trying to achieve here, I guess my personal goal would be, you know, let's develop and have policies that are sort of consistent with all school districts. I'm not terribly interested in going on and above what sort of the, you know, typical school district has with similar types of policies. So, I guess my question is, you know, with all the school districts that you represent and work with, are we looking at policies that are consistent, you know, comparable to other school districts, or are we sort of going on and above what's, you know, normal and typical? Again, personally, I just want us to be sort of on par with many other school districts in terms of, you know, what they have found to have as effective, you know, policies for their school, school board and district.
I think that's an excellent point. In my experience, policies from one district to another do vary, and they vary based on experience. If you've had a bad experience with the situation, whether it be an employment situation, maybe it was a picketing situation with a teacher's strike, you're going to be more inclined to have policies that address those kinds of situations. What I do when I try to write a policy is I try to foresee as many of the potential problems as possible. I'm not going to get them all. There's nobody who can. But I try to get as many as possible so that you at least are aware of the potential issues, and if you want to scale back from there, you can. I would say that the vast majority of these policies are consistent. You're not going to find one that's identical to anybody else's, because I've custom-written these, but they are certainly consistent with what you'll find in other districts. The school board expectations and ethics policy, as you know, the original policy that you had was lifted from the old NSBA policy that existed, and that policy has gone through metamorphosis over the years and had changed a bit. The policy that you have now, what I did when I created that, is I pulled some other policies from other districts, and I pulled language from theirs, then I took language from your original policy, and then I tried to use my own language in ways that would be, make sense. And rather than focusing, just for example, on board member Gurke, what I tried to do is focus on the discussion that we had at the workshop, and focus on my experience in terms of what makes a board function effectively together. And that's what I tried to encapsulate in that school board expectations and ethics policy. I want to reiterate, too, that I've tried to go out to the edge so that you can see each of the potential issues. If you're uncomfortable with any of them, for example, the picketing language, that's something you could address later. You don't have to address it now. The only thing I would say to you, though, in that regard, is that it's always better to have a policy in place before a problem arises, rather than after one's happening, then you try to quickly insert one, because then it does start to look like it's content-based, rather than a true content-neutral type of provision.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Lynn?
From my standpoint, I feel like there's a lot to absorb, and maybe, I don't know that, from my standpoint, I can accomplish all of that at tonight's meeting, especially when it's 10:10 at night. Some of the things that I look at are, you know, if I, for instance, like you said, if I was concerned about the picketing language, or if I was concerned about going to one of the schools, or some specifics of each of these policies, I don't know that I would be ready to dive into all of those details, or say, how could we pull this out, or find out what the other board members feel about some of the specifics of the policies, especially the ethics one. So, I guess what I would like to ask is, what are our options for moving forward? We either have an opportunity to make a motion to approve them, or we have an opportunity to have them tabled, or what are our options for courses of action?
Like any, go ahead, Nick. Like any, you can make a motion to accept, deny, or to refer, table it, or refer to committee?
That's another point, Mr. President. You know, we did used to have committees that reviewed policies, and I think that would have given us the opportunity to maybe hash out some of the concerns that board members might have had, or have that level of input to refer to the greater board.
Let's keep that in mind. I think...
Mr. President? Yes. It's very evident that Mr. Walzberger and I are never going to agree on much of anything. He can accuse me of making half-truth statements and lying, which is what he accused me of in July, which wasn't true, because I didn't know about comparative studies that you accused me of knowing about and lying about. You and I aren't going to agree. So, if you stay as counsel and I stay on this board, we got 30 more months that we're going to have to figure out how to work together. I'm willing to try to work towards that goal, but I don't think you are. You want me off this board, and you're trying to do what you can to get me off. No, please, don't deny it or comment. All I'm asking this board to do is to wait, to move on this, because this is some big stuff. These changes in here are not little things like he's trying to make you believe they are. So, I would make a motion to postpone this decision on this issue.
We're not ready for a motion yet, Sandy, so we still have citizens that would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not know there were citizens who were going to speak on this.
Yeah, we had them before. She came up and I sat her down.
Okay.
So, why don't you hold that unless you have something else you want to finish?
No, I'll wait to make my motion.
All right, then we'll have, we have three citizens.
Mr. Holland, if I could, just a real brief comment here, just, I guess, to respond to Sandy, as she mentioned that I apparently had encouraged her early on to follow the rules. And I guess I would just say that I think that's a reasonable request. The rules are there to help us conduct business, stay out of legal trouble, and serve the community well. So, I guess I'll just, I'll stand by remark, and I implore you once again to please, please follow the rules.
Okay, so we have three citizens' requests to speak. Jeanette Coons, speaking on these topics now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jeanette Coons, 1122 Summer Street North. Some of this may sound redundant. I didn't realize what previous speakers were going to say, so I do apologize for that. The concern that I have tonight is regarding school board policy revisions and the legal counsel you have contracted to make such suggestions. Earlier tonight, we heard about SMART goals, and I'm all for the SMART goals, and one of the topics they discussed was how we have to unlearn past behavior. That's a recommendation I would make for this board to unlearn some of the past divisive behavior that's taken place over the last few months. The agenda that you have regarding these changes in policy revision was posted late Friday afternoon, and I would imagine that just a couple of business days is not significant enough time to absorb all the ramifications of those policies. And just now, Ms. Robson and Ms. Gurke have agreed with that, and I appreciate that. Numerous citizens have confirmed that the incidents that took place at our July meeting where counsel was allowed to publicly harm the reputation of both Ms. Simmons and Ms. Gurke were in direct violation of existing policies. One such example is how our board president here acted unilaterally to order that investigation. Additionally, there's a letter that was received by the entire board requesting a public apology to those two.
Point of order, President Holland. This is not on the policies.
Maintain it on the topic, on the agenda. Stay with the agenda, please.
It goes to credibility of the counsel?
Stay with the agenda. On policy.
Okay. School board policies have the force of law in many instances, but violation of a school board policy by a school board member could not be construed to be a violation of law in Wisconsin. To date, there has been no such apology. During that same meeting, the counsel advised...
Same objection, point of order, Your Honor.
Okay, how can I compete with an attorney? In short, what I'm trying to say is what you've received from the existing counsel is not advice worthy of the price you paid, in my opinion, and our community has paid dearly by the advice of this.
At this point, again, I'm going to ask that the comments be stopped.
It needs to be stopped, because you can't seem to stay on the topic of the policy of 1125, so...
I'm just asking that you table this until the board has ample time to read through the extent of what these changes would be.
You made that point. You made that point. Thanks. Mary Yakub. Name and address.
Mary Yakub, 154 Dunbar Pass. Thank you to superintendent. I didn't realize that you had a hand in the questions before a topic reaction comes up. Maybe that's a policy you might want to look at as well, because my question came up as I was listening to the lawyer. So, I just have two, not really a question, but maybe two suggestions for your policy changes, and one would be that to avoid the open meeting law concerns, that you might possibly want to consider posting your agendas for your subcommittee meetings that would allow the public to be able to attend if they wish to, and would avoid open meeting concerns if a member of the board may choose last minute to want to attend for any questions they may have. My other suggestion, that I respect your request, is that you might possibly suggest to the elementary schools and the middle school and high school to maybe post the school board agenda on their E-Thursday folders. I think the middle school and high school get those as well, but I know when I was first a parent in the schools, it was very hard for me to navigate through the website. I obviously know how to now and how to find things like that, but it wasn't easy to find the agendas early on, and I think that would be a nice suggestion for the public and the parents to know what's on the school board agendas a little more easily. I think that would be a very simple thing to do, to put them in with the E-Thursday folders. Thank you.
Thanks for the suggestions, point of, just to order that we do post 24 hours in advance committee meetings in the newspaper. Websites and sites that we post, so. Kurt Weiss.
My name is Kurt Weiss. I live at 613 Cedar Drive North in North Hudson. Surprised you didn't yell "point of order" when she was talking about that suggestion, because it had nothing to do with what was going on. Like, that's what I'm saying. See, that's what I'm saying, right here, though, Tom. That's what I said.
All right.
I was just surprised you didn't yell "point of order." It wasn't affecting him.
You're out of order.
So, I still want to say something, though, Tom, okay? Can I just say something about the...
I'll determine that, whether you can say it.
Well, I want to talk about, okay, the area where you talk about speaking as one. I think each and every one of you should take a long, hard look at that, and look at what has transpired in Madison, look at what is transpiring in Washington, D.C., and look at what has transpired here in our community as the city council voted five to one to deny rezoning, yet the very next morning, a member of the city council was on Minnesota Public Radio talking about his decision.
I don't see what this has to do with Policy Number 7800, Kurt.
It has everything to do with speaking as one. You can't say that I'm saying speaking as one.
I'm going to give you one more warning to stay on policy.
Bring in the police. I'm talking about speaking as one, and that has something to do with that. If you want to call the police and have them drag me out, go ahead. That's what I'm speaking about, Mr. Holland, and that was my point. That was a reference I was making that after that vote, Mr. Hoggatt went on Minnesota Public Radio the very next day, and he has every right to do that, and I'm glad that he did that as a dissenting vote on the city council. That's my point. That's a point that I made, and if every time I get up here, you're going to yell "point of order," throw me out. Bring in the police, because I'm not leaving the next time. Have them handcuff me.
May I respond?
Yes.
As I said earlier, the policy does not prohibit somebody from airing their personal opinions or disagreeing with the vote of the board. What the policy does is it prohibits an individual from taking action that will undermine an action that's been approved by the board, and that's the last bullet point on the first, my first page. Second from the last bullet point under expectations, and then when you look at the bullet points under requirements, there's one to work cooperatively and respectfully with other board members, and to establish effective policies, and to implement initiatives and actions established through majority vote. Again, very clearly, we're not seeking through changes. I'm not seeking through these proposed changes to limit the ability of a board member to say, I disagree with that, either at the time of the vote, before the vote, or after the vote. What we cannot have, though, is say, you voted in favor of that, and I'm going to take these actions to undermine it, so that that action you took can't be carried through. So, like, when you enter the contract, the board president can't say, well, I voted against it, so I'm not signing it. I voted against it, so I'm not going to, I'm going to take action so the district can't perform its duties under that contract. That's all it's trying to say.
May I make my motion now?
You may make a motion, yeah.
I would make a motion to table this issue until a committee of this setup, from the members of this board, have the opportunity to study what these changes mean.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for tabling. Is there a second? Can I ask a question about the motion? Let's get this motion... I just want to clarify the motion. Is it for all, if I could? Is it for, Sandy, is it for all the policies or one particular one, or...
All of the policies, I think, need to be looked at, though some are less offensive than others, but I think we can work our way through them and figure out which ones are in the best interest of the electorate.
So, all the policies, meaning then that Procedure 1310.1 is excluded? That's a procedure? There are six policies and one procedure?
All of the things that he had just described, the policies, the procedure...
So you're including 1125, 1230, 2300, 7600, 7601, and 7800?
And 1310.
And 13, so that's a procedure, all right, okay, so it's clear. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mr. President, just a clarification on the motion, which I think included referral to a committee, but I'm not sure which committee.
I believe we would have to set up a committee of, say, three or four members of this board to, more, more like an administrative committee, which is what many of the municipalities have. I think Lynn made mention of that. You used to have a committee that did this type of thing? So that's what I have in mind with a committee.
We can determine which committee.
Given that, I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
No. All right, motion passes. Moving on to process for determining short-term space for learning plan. Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. When we talk about secondary space for learning, we need to address immediate needs in the short term. And the best short-term secondary space for learning plan for both the middle school and high school leads to the long-term plan and to address our student enrollment growth. And so administratively, we have looked at breaking this down into a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. Phase 1 is a immediate, short-term planning, and we have been doing some of that over a period of time for both the middle school and the high school, and it provides a level of relief to the most immediate needs that can be addressed. And it's for the next year. So the Phase 1 that we're talking about is for the 2013, 2014 year. Is that right? Yes, okay. And it would be looking at identifying first what are the most critical short-term needs at both buildings. It would be an internal process for input, so we would be looking at the staff, faculty, staff at the middle school and the high school with, along with their administration and along with the district administration to review options. This is not a focus on build options, but is primarily focusing on non-build options. And then it would be bringing back to the board in probably February a recommendation for both the middle school and the high school for the next year. The reason that, for the Phase 1, is because we haven't determined that long-term plan yet, and you want to have your short-term solutions lead towards the long-term solution. So it's a immediate solution, assuming that we would have a long-term solution identified within the next year through a referendum of some sort approximately over the next year, and that referendum would identify the next long-term solution. If the referendum was approved, we would move into a Phase 2A, which is a, which would be another short-term solution, but it would be a multi-year solution, as we did with Rivercrest. After the referendum was passed, we had a short-term solution for the period of time between the referendum and the opening of the school, because the school was in sight. So we knew what we were leading towards, and that solution in the second phase really led toward the new school. If a referendum was not passed, then the Phase 2 would be based on the reevaluation of why the referendum went down, certainly the next steps, and then we would look for a multi-year plan to move forward at that point. For example, in Phase 2, it could be, one of the things we would probably look at would be a multi-track year-round school, and I really want to emphasize the multi-track. A year-round school will not provide enough spa, any additional space for us. The only thing that will is a multi-track where we essentially have, one model is to have two-thirds of our students on campus at a time, and our campus is divided in two-thirds. Two-thirds are there, one-third's off, because that's how you create more space, and it runs year-round. So students start at different times, they have different vacations at different times depending upon what track they're on. And that would be a Phase 2B type of solution that we would be looking at. We're recommending a process to move forward with Phase 1, again, an internal process that would bring a recommendation for action for the board in February after internal evaluation of those processes. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The Facilities and Grounds Committee considered this and supported the recommendation, so you would be taking action on the Phase 1 being an internal process for this next year.
Any questions or comments regarding this secondary space for learning short-term plan?
Mr. President?
Lynn.
In our committee meeting, we did also talk about some of that criteria that we would use and looking back on the criteria that we had established when we had gone through this process before.
Mm-hmm.
And that was established by the board.
Right. So we'll, we'll review the criteria that we had originally looked at and see for, whether it's still valid, so.
Mr. Pres...
Yes.
Question? Will, will the criteria that was presented by the Task Force Committee be part of what we're going to review?
I believe that that was also requested by a board member for our work session on the 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Just a clarification, the work session on the 30th, those, the primary focus is on long-term planning?
It was requested by a board member, though, for, for the, for the purposes of this review, if I recall.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Lynn.
As a clarification, I think it was for the work session to have that information in preparation for the work session.
And so clarification for me, understanding, are, are we looking at that criteria for the short term at the work session? Or are we looking at that criteria for evaluating long-term solutions?
I think that it was, I don't, I don't know the distinction between, I just remembered that it was requested.
I guess my question is, is would it be, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Is that information, that detail relevant to the short term, or, my perception is it was more relevant to the long-term planning, so that's what, when I recommended it, that's what I was thinking about, but I, I don't know the answer.
My interpretation of what happened was is that there was a request by a board member for the '04 study as an, as an overall information that would be needed and data needed for the process, whether it would be used exactly at this stage, I don't know.
Okay.
That wasn't the intention, so. Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding this? Okay. So what we're, what, what we're taking action on tonight is Fa, is Phase 1 in terms of the plan.
The process.
The Phase 1 for the, the process towards the plan, right. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. President, move to approve the secondary space for learning short-term planning.
Okay. Second. Was that Phase 1, Lynn?
Phase 1, I'm sorry.
In the motion?
Correct.
Okay, so amend the, a motion to indicate that it's intended to mean to speak to Phase 1. Second, Brian? Okay. Any other further discussion?
Would you, would you restate the motion?
Mr. President, move to approve the Phase 1 secondary space for learning short-term planning.
Thank you.
And that was a second, second by Brian. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the use and designation of general fund balance. Tim.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start out with a review of the, the Board Policy 3121 as relates to fund balance, and I'll just hit on some of the highlights as it relates to what, what the recommendation is. Maintaining adequate fund balance is essential to financial stability of the district and its, its sound fiscal management. When we look at fund balance under number, under Section 1, it's now split apart per the regulations of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. We split it apart into four different areas, five, five different classes, and those are non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, committed fund balance, assigned fund balance, and unassigned fund balance. And tonight, what we're talking about is committed fund balance, and that's a classification that includes amounts that are committed for a specific purpose, and it requires a formal board action. Under Section 2, the board should be required to commit the use of fund balance for a specific purpose or to remove or change a previous fund balance commitment made by the board. Board action to commit fund balance should occur prior to the end of the fiscal year for which the commitment is made, June 30. However, the actual amounts to be committed can be determined as subsequent year. So we're talking about, actually, for the, the year we're talking about is the current year we're in, 1213. If we move on to Section 4, and this again addresses what we'll be going through in a moment, funds in excess of the district's operational needs may be committed or assigned for future capital expansion, improvements, or equipment to help protect the taxpayers' investment in district facilities. Under number 5, the district shall strive to maintain unassigned fund balance, that's between 25 and 30 percent of budgeted appropriations for the fiscal year. The reason that we maintain that fund balance is to help with the timing of cash flows. Now, there are points in there where we see, we receive settlements, state aids and tax settlements, and then we go a period of time where we don't have much revenue flow coming in, so we need to maintain an adequate fund balance to cover those times. Otherwise, we get into a position where we're short-term borrowing, and that, that incurs interest costs. We provide, we want to, again, minimize the short-term borrowing or eliminate it. The, we also want to safeguard against unanticipated necessary expenses that may occur, for example, roof failures or major building failures are things that can impact, you know, they don't necessarily fall under the realm of planning if you have a roof failure and you need to get it fixed immediately. That's where fund balance would also come in. In addition, healthy reserve levels result in a high credit rating, and the district has experienced that high credit rating, second highest rating from the top. We also have fund balance to plan for unanticipated changes in tax and spending policies of the state and federal governments. Of course, we're dependent on those revenues, and as those policies change and as those budgets change, as we've seen in the past, this past year and two years prior to that, we, we had declines in state aid of 10 percent, roughly, at least 10 percent or maybe a little over that. And then we also accommodate for economic, for economic and growth uncertainty. So there's a number of different reasons that we maintain a fund balance, and the end result is it's, it's essential to provide financial stability to the district. If we move on to the next section, if we look at where we project the unassigned fund balance, general fund balance, June 30th, 2013, so if we project out where we think we're going to end up at the end of this coming year, we're going to stand at about $18,500,000. If we look at policy and calculate that amount, it should be somewhere around just a little over $15 million. So the amount that's above and beyond, which, which is item, going back to item 5, is about $3.4 million. The proposal is, if you go down to that next line, proposed space for learning, committed fund balance, that would be the recommendation, so recommending that you commit, take formal board action to commit $3.4 million to space for learning. Now, that can be either space for learning for short-term, long-term, or both. And then that would then in effect bring the projected unassigned fund balance down to $15,100,000, and then the projected unassigned fund balance about 28.93 percent, and again, looking forward to a 1314 year and trying to extrapolate some numbers, it's about 28.93 percent. Now, this is something that you've done, the board has done in the past, that's similar to what was done to build this building. The board had set aside $3.5 million for the construction of Rivercrest. What happened is then that reduced the bond, the amount, the dollar amount of the bonds, which in return reduced the debt service load on the tax levy. So it reduced the debt service that was paid back. In addition, it reduced the interest costs that was paid back on, on those bonds, and those bonds are generally 20-year bonds. We also did it for the middle school addition. You used $1 million. You had a special bond issue, which was available at the time, which was an interest-free bond issue, and then you used fund balance to fund the, the other roughly half of that portion for that middle school addition. So that, again, the recommendation is to commit fund balance, to take the action to commit the fund balance, $3.4 million for proposed space for learning. Any questions?
Questions regarding the suggested use of the portion of the fund balance?
I have some, I have some questions.
Sandy?
This, the money, the $3.4 million would go into Fund 10? Is that, my understanding, Fund Number 10?
The, right, the general fund.
Okay, so it's in the general fund right now, correct?
Yes, and that's a, and fund balance is, I will say, it's not cash, but it's, it's at a point in time. It's assets minus liabilities gives you fund balance.
So it's in a general fund right now, so then it stays in the general fund and it just gets assigned to the space for learning?
You would, you would...
You don't transfer it out of that fund and put it somewhere else on a different account?
No, it would stay, it would stay in the general fund, and then the process would be used as you go through, as you go through the process for space for learning, you would draw, you would draw on that portion of fund balance. It can't, through the, through the board action tonight, it wouldn't be available to be used for anything other than space for learning.
Okay, all right, so if it was, if we used it to reduce the levy rather than assign it to proposed space for learning, do you have any idea how much it would further reduce the levy from what the levy is already going to be?
The, if you, if you reduce the levy, what you, what will happen is you'll have a funding deficit the next year that you'll have to address, and that will either be addressed, you know, you're going to address it three different ways. To reduce that amount, the levy by $3.4 million, will require you to find $3.4 million next year, otherwise you'll face a very large percentage increase in your tax levy, or you'll have some major, major cuts.
It would require us to find $3.4 million if that's the amount we're going to spend on the short-term space solution? Am I thinking of it wrong incorrectly?
Well, if you, if you apply, there's, there's two different ways. So you can either, if you use this as proposed and lower borrowing, the amount that you borrow, that goes as tax relief, or if you put it back against the operating levy, that also goes as tax relief, but the different, there's a big difference between the two. And if you put it back against operating, then you're going to have the next, the ensuing year, you're going to need to find $3.4 million in revenue, tax levy increases, or major cuts, or a combination. If you put it back against the amount that you borrow, then you're putting it back in a way that's more over time, and it's not having a detrimental effect on the tax levy, because you'll caught, what, what will happen is you'll cause, if you don't put it back as, you know, for a short-term, or for borrowing needs, or to address, even if you had, for example, if the board decides to do a short-term solution, a cap, a small capital project, you'll be able to access these funds, and you'll have, you'll have no impact to the tax levy. But if you go back and you put that amount back against the operational tax levy for this year, then you'll have to address that for the next year.
Okay, all right. Yes, it does, thank you. Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mark.
I move that we allocate 3.4 million to the proposed space for learning committed fund balance.
Motion on the, you want to repeat the motion again, Mark, please?
Sure. I moved that we allocate 3.4 million to the proposed space for learning committed fund balance.
Okay. For clarity, the recommendation is secondary space for learning. Did you want to make that amendment?
I I will.
Okay, so it's amended to propose use of the 3.4 million dollars for a secondary space for learning options in the future. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay, second? Is there a second? Second by Dan. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 2012-13 Open Enrollment Exception Application, Corey.
We're back with another one. As you can see in your materials here, we have a new application for open enrollment out of the district. This is a student who's currently being homeschooled. And by way of background, what I can share with you is that this was a student who had applied for the regular open enrollment period last spring, was approved by you as a board and by the non-resident district. Family emergency ensued, and the student was not and the family were not able to complete the finalization of that process. So they're not coming back now that their family situation has resolved itself somewhat and asking, in essence, again, to apply to the Grantsburg School District for their online program. So you got a home currently a homeschooled student asking for open enrollment exception out based under the one of the severing criteria, that best interest of the student to go to the Grantsburg District online. So after careful consideration of the circumstances around this case, the administration is recommending approval of that application and is in agreement with the parent and is asking for your approval.
Okay, move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion by Brian, second by Lynn. Any other discussion? None, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Authorization for district administration to take action on open enrollment exceptions, Corey.
So generally, the same topic. And what we're proposing for you tonight is, as I've shared with you at previous board meetings, based on the this new, relatively new, I guess, state law change that has created those seven circumstances where parents can apply for open enrollment exceptions. So I want you to make a clear distinction between the regular open enrollment period in the spring. This year is February 6 through April 30. This is separate from that. This is an exception that they cannot request at any point in the year. So because of the timelines and the details and the and the nature of the applications, we have a bit of an issue with waiting for board meetings to approve those applications. It does impair our ability to coordinate with other school districts. It does delay our responsiveness to other parents. Based on the level of detail and the circumstances in their applications required by the application, we we have to walk a fine line around data privacy as well. So we're asking for you to consider giving the district administration authority to make decisions just on exceptions to open enrollment. Of course, the regular open enrollment period in the spring where you where we get dozens and many, many applications, we would continue with the same process. This allows the district administration to make decisions when it's a student-by-student exception, where we can apply the criteria set by the state based on the circumstances of each family. So we're just recommending that the board provide that authority to the administration to take action on applications when they are received.
Okay. Questions or a motion? Move to approve?
I second it.
Motion by Brian. Is that a second?
Yeah, a second.
Second by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you. Move to the consent items. So approval of September 11, 2012, board meeting minutes, personnel hires, changes, retirements, resignations, non-renewals, terminations and leaves, and expenditures. And if I could have somebody read the language around the expenditure motion. We'll take this as one item.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the consent items, including expenditures in the amount of $1,747,251.59.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Lynn. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I'm gonna pause for a second here and allow Nancy to recognize an individual.
You've just acted upon the retirement of a custodian, Leonard Bozel, who was hired in 1993 and began working at the then junior high. And the building changed, but Lenny, he's called Lenny, never did. So he continued to work all this time at the senior high. So tonight, you approved his retirement, and we just wanted to make formal public mention of that and thank Lenny for his work in the district.
Lenny's smartly not here tonight?
No, he's not, he's not here tonight.
Good move, Lenny.
Yeah.
So congratulations to Lenny and thanks for his service to our district. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. First up, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, sir. The Learn and the Program Development Committee met on September 24. We covered the SMART goals, which we covered tonight. We talked about homeless services update that there's more, we have more students that are that are homeless in our district. Talked about how we're supporting them, which is unfortunate, but we're doing a good job there. And then we looked at disseminated data, basically looking at groups like minorities and low income and, you know, on subsidized lunch. And we're doing better with those groups than the state average, but there's still a gap between, you know, those those groups and the and the and the larger group. And the gaps are higher in math than in reading and higher in secondary than in in elementary school. And Corey and the team have a plan to kind of try to reduce that gap. It will always it will probably always be there, but we're trying to reduce that. And then we had the ACT report that Sandy covered today. So questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Brian. Moving on to Finance Committee, Dan Turnahoy.
I'm gonna make this shorter than Brian. The Finance Committee, we covered the Act 10 and Emergency Rules Update, which we covered tonight, same way with the recently discussed use of and or designation of the fund balance. And then the update on the 2012-13 budget and levy. We covered all those items, so. But I'll accept any questions.
Okay. Moving on to the Facilities and Grounds Committee. We had actually four agenda items. One was tabled. The one tabled was capital projects, just not ready for presentation at that point. Two of the items were already covered in the board meeting tonight, secondary space for learning, next steps, and use of and or designation of fund balance. The one item that I'll report was use of residual construction funds for Rivercrest. When we built this building, we had put aside some money because of some terrain issues, some some terrain issues, erosion issues. So we put aside in anticipation that that issue may continue down the road. We had partnership, our agreement with the Y across the street because it affected them as well. It's been now, how many years since we've been, 2008 opened this building? So we're ready to, I think, release those funds. And the Facilities Committee would like to use that money. It has to be used. There's restrictions on it. It can only be used to go back into Rivercrest. Or was there another one?
No, it must be used for Rivercrest, right. You're right.
For Rivercrest alone. So we identified three areas that were had some needs, physical physical needs here at the building. One was a wall, a dividing wall, another shading issue for windows, and seal coating were the three areas. Those totaled to be about 28,000 to 29,000 anticipated projected cost. So the remaining of that, we'd like to use to go to to be used to lower the tax levy, which won't amount to much, but it's but that's one that's one allowable use of the funds, as I understand. So that's the report. Unless there's any questions? Okay. Then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Holland.
Up, 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 up.
Oh, he did this once.
Sorry, Mark.
He did this once before, Tom.
So in a hurry, sorry. Personnel.
Personnel Committee met last week. Two items on the agenda, which we covered earlier this evening. Mr. Erickson presented the information on Act 1032 Emergency Rules Update, and Ms. Sweet took us through the salary and benefit comparability study for coordinators, supervisors, and support employees.
Questions, Mark? Okay, thank you, Mark. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent E, parent G, to negotiate the purchase of public property and to confer with legal counsel and to prepare for negotiations with WCEA Hudson Teachers Union.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, we'll do a roll call vote, Pat.
Kaiser, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
I do. No, I.
Okay. Motion passes, we're adjourned.